Councilmember Giroux.
Here.
Can I go backwards? I did.
You did. That's all right. I'm still here.
I threw you all off. Councilmember Baldino.
Present.
Councilmember Persak here. Mayor Protem Pimental.
Here.
And Mayor Boiles.
Here.
All right, you're all here.
Great. All right, we are fortunate to have Pastor Jared McKenna lead us in the invocation, followed by Councilmember Giroux leading the pledge of allegiance. All please rise.
First, I'd like to say it's an honor to be here. My dad does this all the time and it's my first one. So grew up in El Segundo, love this town, and it's an honor for me to be here with you guys. So let's pray. Lord, we thank you for today, God. And Lord, we thank you for this city. Lord, I pray for our leaders, God. Lord, we thank you that you have placed them in these positions. And Father, I pray that you give them wisdom for this city as we move forward. Lord, I pray that you give them sound minds, unity, Father. Lord, we thank you for every city worker, our law enforcement, our first responders, our teachers, God, our coaches, Father. Lord, we thank you for what this city represents, how you've brought it together. And so, Lord, today I pray over this meeting, Lord. I pray peace, God, I pray unity, and Father, that we are able to grow together. And Lord, honor you in everything that we do. Lord, we love you and praise you, and we say this in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well done Pastor McKenna. Thank you. And thank you Councilmember Giroux. First up, we have a special presentation. We have Chief Jaime Bermudas to introduce a new position in the police department. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Today, I'd like to introduce our newest employee, Crime Prevention Specialist Serena Boskovich. She's been coming through. So I'm excited to introduce her to the council and also to our residents. This has been a position that's been vacant for a while. We've had a couple of recruitments, and with the help of HR, we've been able to get a good candidate. It's such an important position for us. I know during strategic planning, we talked a lot about how do we help our residents feel safe in the community. And this position does a lot towards that goal. It's about engagement. It's about community meetings. It's about neighborhood watch, social media outreach. And so she's going to have a big part in that. And so I'm looking forward to, she knows the expectations, and I'm looking forward to what she's going to do for us. A little bit about Serena. She graduated from Cal State Long Beach in 2012. She got a Bachelor of Arts degree in sociology. She's also worked for El Segundo PD before as a dispatcher when we had our own dispatch center. And then when we went over to RCC, she went to RCC and became a dispatcher there. She dispatched for six police departments and three fire departments. She currently lives in San Pedro, and she has two kids, Zane and Easton. So I'd like to introduce to you Serena Boskovich. Serena, you want to say a few words?
I'm really excited for this opportunity with over almost nineteen years of experience starting my career here in El Segundo. I'm excited to be home, and I'm excited to meet all of you. And so I'm looking forward to just this next chapter. So, thank you.
Welcome. Welcome. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. All right, now's the time and place for public communications. Madam Clerk, do we have an indication of how many people would like to speak? Okay.
Jane Katz. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Jane Katz, and I wanted to talk with you tonight to share my story about having been a pedestrian here in El Segundo. I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity. I have family in your community and have spent time here for many years, walking, going to the farmer's market, shopping, and dining here. On January twenty, twenty twenty-two, I was hit by a truck at the corner of Main and Pine. The truck was turning left and hit me in the crosswalk. A gentleman from your community witnessed the accident, did not allow the driver to help me get up, stayed with me until the ambulance came, and even found my glasses, which had fallen off. I am deeply grateful to him for his kindnesses to me. I have no memory of being hit, and I have no trauma when I think of the incident as it's been described to me. I believe this is because of this kind person who went out of his way to help me and keep me calm. Your police officers, in their accident report, took insurance information from the driver, but it was phony or had expired. The only insurance that helped me with my recovery was my own car insurance policy through an uninsured driver's clause. Should the officer have been able to check the information for accuracy? I don't know, but it would have been helpful for me. The paramedics were kind to me. I regained consciousness while they were bandaging my head wound and loading me into the ambulance. It had been, I had been on my way to meet a daughter and grandson at a local restaurant. The paramedics, at my request, called my daughter to tell her what had happened, so she would not wait at the restaurant and wonder where I was. I was taken to UCLA Harbor Medical Center. The emergency room was busy, but I was treated kindly. X-rays and other tests were made. They put stitches in the head wound and released me to my family about three hours after the accident. The hospital told me to follow up regarding a concussion and head wound, but said I had no fractures. My own doctor sent a nurse to my home to follow up with the head wound. And when I was still in a great deal of pain, a few days later, she ordered new X-rays, which actually found eight fractures. Would another hospital have found these fractures at the time I was seen and received treatment sooner? I'll never know. But it was a shock, and I kept thinking that the hospital could have at least found one or two of the eight. I was treated by my own doctors and specialists as recommended. None of my injuries required surgical interventions, just time to heal. Even the concussion was nonspecific. I consider myself to be extremely lucky. I was mostly healed in about six months, although I did have some concussion symptoms for about a year. Since I am a retired person, I had the time to heal, but a working person would have had that additional problem. Later I read that more than two hundred pedestrians were killed in California last year. It was my, it is my understanding that here in El Segundo, you are doing all the things that are required for pedestrian safety, such as contrasting crosswalks, stop signs, and lights. So I thank you for that. But my desire to share tonight is in hopes that my story will give you an awareness as you make decisions in the future. I hope your decisions will give every consideration to the initial safety of pedestrians, and that whatever, to whatever extent it's within your ability, that your decisions will protect those people after an injury. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Katz. We're glad you're okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Going once, twice? Okay, we're closing public communications. Anything you'd like to follow up on that, Mr. George, or you want to just go straight to the Hyperion?
Yes, likewise. Thankfully, I'm glad to hear it all turned out okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As I always do during our meetings, I give you an update on the status of a number of things related to the Hyperion Treatment Plant. I'll start off with our Assemblymember Marasucci Bill AB 1216, which is moving along quite nicely. In fact, it will be heard tomorrow at nine AM at the Senate Environmental Quality Committee meeting in Sacramento. Councilmember Ryan Baldino will be representing the city and making a two-minute presentation to the committee on behalf of the city and the supporting of the bill. Over the past two weeks, we have been in a number of discussions with AQMD regarding the wording in the bill, also in a handful of conversations I've had with Senator Allen directly as he chairs this committee. So I do want to thank our ad hoc committee, again, Councilmember Baldino, Councilmember Persak, as well as Tracy Miller-Zarnicky, who's also on the committee, and Elias and Diane. We meet regularly as a committee to discuss issues like this. So good luck tomorrow. AQMD held a hearing today regarding Hyperion's compliance with the expanded order of abatement that was issued back in January. We'll share the outcome of that meeting on our website as soon as AQMD issues its proposed findings and decision. Also today, though, AQMD became aware of the elevated level, an elevated level H2S reported at the fence line yesterday, June nineteenth, and they're investigating that matter as we speak. And then finally, we do continue to meet with Dr. Stenstrom on key kind of technical areas of contaminants and anything we need a technical advice on. So he continues to be helpful for staff in the ad hoc committee on a weekly basis. That's all I have to write. Yes.
Question on the H2S. Was that, did they report that, or did a member of our public identify that and bring it to their attention? Both, like concurrently or? Which happened first? Did they make us aware of it, or did one of our residents?
They did not. Hyperion did not inform us. We heard from residents and as well as AQMD staff.
Is it, so what does that mean? Do we assume that they knew and they didn't report it, or that they did not know?
Well, I'm sure they knew, but I have no way of proving that, because they're supposed to check that, you know, air monitoring at the fence line.
When there's an event like that, are there thresholds that are set with this monitoring software whereby somebody's notified if it exceeds a certain threshold, or do you have to be actively monitoring it at the time?
My understanding is that people could sign up on the app, and when and if the thresholds are above a certain number, that they will get contacted and they will get the notification. But you can always go, and anybody could go with the phone and sign up on the app and can instantly get the reading. But people that are signed up, they're supposed to be receiving when the thresholds are above what they should be.
And then did Hyperion have a response about this?
They have not responded to me. We had, a few weekends ago, we had similar situation where we were contacted, and the levels of H2S, you know, was above what they should be. And when I called them, they said there is nothing, no special project that is going on. I do know they've been working on their scrubber and also on their covers. So most likely, this is related to either replacement of the covers on the primary tanks or fixing their scrubbers. But they have not told me at least anything yet.
Okay, and then the tank covers, those are the notorious tank covers we've been talking about for a long time.
Yes, sir.
So they finally got those fabricated and?
No, no, no. Yeah, they're installing the temporary ones, not the permanent ones. Yeah, by end of the year twenty-four. Yeah. Right.
All right.
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Yes.
Let's keep coming. All right, item A, procedural motions. Read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda, and by title only. We'll have to do everything by a voice vote this evening with Mayor Protem remote. Do we have a motion to do so? Giroux, so moved. Give it a second.
Persek, second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you please do the voice vote?
Absolutely. Councilmember Baldino.
Aye.
Councilmember Giroux.
Yes.
Councilmember Persak.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimental.
Yes.
And Mayor Boiles.
Yes.
Okay, five oh.
Thank you. All right, we have consent. Lot of items on consent or under consent. Do we have any pulls?
I would like to pull number eight.
I'd like to pull number ten.
Okay, hold one second, please. Eight and ten. Any others? Okay, do we have a motion to approve items? No, let's not encourage Chris to have an, just kidding. Do we have a motion to approve items one through twenty-four with the exception of eight and ten?
Four through thirteen.
Oh, one through, yep.
The one through twenty-four is like, you know.
Ah, okay. Okay, so we're just doing one through?
One through thirteen.
One through thirteen minus eight and ten. Okay, thanks. Do we have a motion to do so? Oh, go ahead. Giroux, second. Great, great. That was Persak with the first and Giroux the second. Okay, Madam Clerk, voice vote, please.
Councilmember Giroux. I did it again. I'm looking straight at you, that's why. Councilmember Giroux.
Yes.
Councilmember Baldino.
Aye.
Councilmember Persak.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimental.
Yes.
And Mayor Boiles.
Yes.
Five oh.
Thank you. Okay, Ryan, item eight, please.
Item eight is the design and plans of the George Brett Field Restroom Improvement Project. I just wanted to highlight this because we are in the midst of our Little League All-Star season, and I want to just let the people in town know that we do have, we're working on plans to get those bathrooms renovated, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I just wanted to thank staff for getting this done. I know it's been a high priority, and those are definitely in need of some renovations and some care. So just wanted to point out that we are making progress, and hopefully those bathrooms will be ready to go next All-Star season, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Elias.
Yes, sir.
And with that, I'll move approval on item number eight. Okay, we have a second?
Persek, second.
Great. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilball, Councilmember Baldino.
Yes.
I am having a hard time.
You're gonna get through it.
I will. Councilmember Giroux.
Yes.
Councilmember Persak.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimental.
Yes.
And Mayor Boiles.
Yes.
Five oh.
Great, thank you. And then Councilmember Persak, item ten.
So item number ten is planned adoption for City Hall Phase Two improvements, Project PW twenty-three dash oh-nine. So my question on this one, I know we had talked about this a long time ago, and I just wanted to make sure from a timing perspective that we have the bandwidth to continue to do this, and is the need, and like urgent, because I know one of the key components is the relocation of IT.
Yes, ma'am.
The relocation of the media team from the high school to the city hall.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the redesign of the mailroom so that we can accommodate the new.
Yes, ma'am.
People coming over. So I know we have a lot of other capital improvement projects on the docket, which are near and dear to me, a lot with the parks and our plunge and the sign. There's a lot that the residents really want done.
Yes, ma'am.
And I want to make sure that this does not impede those projects in any way or takes, and I just wanted to understand, on the joint use, was the school district wanting us to get, to move the people, or was that our decision? Like, are they okay with this?
Hey, before we continue, Carol, can you hold that thought for one second? Just because I'm going to recuse myself, because I have a conflict with downtown, and this is City Hall, so I'll be right back.
Do I? I have a conflict downtown, too.
I believe so. So.
Everyone but me and Ryan.
Okay, Lance, you're going to facilitate, because you're the senior guy on the dais.
Nice.
Chris is remote, so Carol and I are leaving now.
I didn't study for this stuff.
Those are my questions, so you guys can answer.
Okay, sure. So answer to the question that was raised. My understanding is that the school district decided to have the El Segundo media to be relocated. It was not our decision. They wanted us to accept them and have them moved to City Hall.
So if I'm reading the tea leaves on this, as part of the joint use agreement, that's going to be coming up, I know there was a valuation placed on that, on our media center being there, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So by us now relocating the media center?
Half of, okay, the entire media center, yes.
The entire media center. I'm hoping.
No, I think, yeah, I think they're still going to maintain some.
It's a tag team.
Good evening. So about three months ago, the school district approached us and asked us to relocate part of the media center. So one part held, the office is like a big classroom. One half of it held the offices, the other half was our studio. They wanted us to vacate that front area so that they could have it for additional classroom space. So we are moving, we have moved out of that area, and that's why now our media team is squished into just the other half, the studio space. And so they need a place to go. So we identified the basement of City Hall as a good location for them.
Okay, so I believe Councilmember recused herself. Her point was just merely, is there room on the capital improvement docket to get this done? And it doesn't, since it doesn't seem to be a matter of building anything, I can't imagine it would be too much of a problem.
That is correct. So this project is on its own, and it's not going to impact any other CIP project, one way or another.
And it was requested as from the school district?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I will, any other questions? Any other questions?
I will move approval.
I will second.
All right, Councilmember Baldino.
Aye.
Councilmember Giroux.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimental.
Yes, thank you.
Three oh.
Thank you, Liz.
That was.
Did it. You should have moved over here. So, okay, we're moving on. Thank you. Public hearing, item fourteen, public hearing for the adoption of a new private instructor permit fee and policy for instructors utilizing city recreation areas and facilities. And this is a time and place here too fixed for the aforementioned. City Clerk was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner.
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received regarding this public hearing?
Not in the clerk's office.
Thank you. Public hearing is now open. Mr. George, who will make the presentation?
Yes, Mayor, Recreation Parks and Libraries Director, Ally Mancina will make the presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Tonight, I am before you requesting your approval on a proposed new fee for private instruction in city parks. As you may be aware, the city currently has a contract instructor program in which the city contracts with individuals to provide instruction for recreational classes, camps, and clinics. The contractor sets their class rates, and the city manages the advertising and registration and provides facility space to conduct the program. Contract instructors receive seventy percent of all registration fees at the resident rate, and the city retains the remaining thirty percent of fees. The contract class program generates approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue annually. During the COVID pandemic, the city saw a significant rise in the number of people conducting private fitness instruction in the parks. At that time, as a courtesy to local business owners, the department allowed persons who owned and operated a business within the city to conduct classes in the parks. As the pandemic began easing, several instructors resumed their business activities in their facilities. In the past year, In the past year, staff has noticed a significant increase in non-authorized business activity taking place in the parks. In addition to one-on-one training, there are multiple day camps, sports classes and other activities being conducted. The additional wear and tear on the park and the challenges with park users having to move around these activities has been challenging. Staff are now proposing a new private instructor permit fee that would help manage these activities in a way that will also generate revenue to help with park maintenance and upkeep. The proposed program will differ from the contract instructor program in several ways, most significantly, most significantly in that instructors will retain any revenue they generate from their activities. The instructors will be required to pay a fifteen dollar per hour fee and will be limited to providing one-on-one instruction. The city will not provide any administrative support and will not advertise for the instructors. Staff will use a badge system to identify permitted instructors and will move unauthorized instructors out of the park. The goal of the program is to ensure that park space remains open and available for the public while also ensuring that those who use the space for business activity pay their fair share to maintain our parks. Staff is proposing that we pilot this program at Recreation Park and Library Park and then consider expanding it if needed. Staff has done some initial research on how other municipality, municipalities are handling this issue and as you can see on the slide above, it varies significantly across the board. It is important to note that several local cities do not allow private instruction in parks at all. So you can see on this slide, we contacted a couple of local communities to see how they were handling this, um, and that the fees vary. Um, for example, in Los Angeles County Department of Recs, Rec and Parks, they charge a hundred and fifty dollars per day regardless of if the instructor is there for one hour or seven hours. Um, the city of Santa Monica has an annual permit fee and then in addition to that, they have a per quarter fee. Uh, the city of Hermosa Beach does an annual application fee and then a monthly fee and then Manhattan, Redondo and Torrance don't allow this type of instruction or activity at all. Uh, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, if, uh, just a reminder, if it's a question, we can ask now. If not, yeah, we gotta close the public hearing before we have council discussion. So any questions that aren't comments or opinions?
So right now, we're just talking about Rec Park and Library Park?
That's correct.
And it's just these areas that are designated for individual instruction?
That's correct.
Right. So it does not include the library in, within the library wall?
That is correct. Um, at this time, I think, uh, we need to do a little more research on how other libraries handle that. It is a little different within the library space, but it's something I'm gonna be working with the city attorney's office on.
I had one question.
Yes.
It's one-to-one only, then what do we do for the groups? Is that just the default that's been in place?
Oh, that's a great question. So anyone who has groups or more than one, we would require them to become a contract instructor with us.
The existing program.
That's right.
Okay.
And one other question, why did we only, um, encapsulate the library and Rec Park? How about Washington and Sycamore and the, our other parks?
Well, I think right now, we're not sure how much enforcement we're gonna need to do and how much staff time that's gonna take. So I think we're, we're kinda, and those are the parks we see most of the activity or that we get most of the complaints, I guess, or concerns from residents about the activities. So I think that was the thought. Um, but if this pushes people into other areas and we need to address it quickly and expand it, we would do that.
Okay. You have a question?
Yeah, I got a couple. Um, I'm trying to find your actual diagram. What, what page in the staff report is that diagram on? One nineteen? Is that what you're looking for? All right, so a couple of things that I have an issue with.
Yeah, but it's not a question.
Sorry, you just did a question, right?
Yeah, just a clarification question.
I'm gonna wait then.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to close the public?
I'm gonna make a motion to close the public.
I'm gonna second that. Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Uh, Councilmember Baldino.
Yes.
Councilmember Jeru.
We're struggling tonight. Yes.
Councilmember Persak.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel.
Yes.
Mayor Boiles.
Yes.
It's closed, five oh.
Great, thank you. Okay, council discussion and you can lead with the.
All right, so a few things. Um, we don't have a lot of park space. So I have a, a genuine issue or concern here that once we make a policy, even people who aren't currently doing it now realize there's an avenue to do it. So we're gonna have to schedule, we're gonna have to supervise, we're gonna have to police it, we're gonna have to do all of those things. Because now there'll be, there won't be anything keeping anyone from running a business in there for a pretty nominal fee. And it's the only public park space that we have. So my concern is we could actually overrun ourselves with this. So I, I have a, I think if we're going to do this, at the minimum, you're gonna have to schedule people in certain parts of that park and not just let them run it whenever they want to run it. So I, I think it actually has to go a little further if we're indeed going to do this. Because that, that, that's to me a, a concern, especially during the summer. You got summer camps going on, people are using it a lot more, they're using it, uh, a larger part of the day as well. So, and if you notice, look, Manhattan Beach, Redondo Beach, Torrance, they don't do it, they don't do it for a reason. So I, I understand that we've kind of allowed a lot of this to happen, but we allowed this over, to happen due to extenuating circumstances in, in the world. So it's not like we allowed this before. So I'm, I'm struggling a little bit that we're choosing to continue this on. If we're gonna continue it on, though, it would have to be scheduled out and, and we have to have enough people on staff to actually go out and confront those who are not supposed to be there. Are we able to do that?
Yeah, so I'm glad you brought these points up. So the idea of having this system in place allows us to monitor how much of this we allow. Um, and it, I think it talks about that in the report, but if it didn't, if it was unclear, we would require the permit and we would determine how many of these permits we wanted to offer per day. And what we would look at is what other things are going on in the park. So for example, yesterday we had a large event in the park, we probably wouldn't have permitted this type of activity on that day. So there will be some scheduling required and we will have to have staff that manage that, but we could mon, we could say we're only going to allow five hours a week in Rec Park, ten hours a week. Whatever it is, we determine to be reasonable and anyone else who is in that park conducting that activity will be moved along. And we do have staff and, and I think the other reason why we picked these two spots initially is because we've got staff in the park all day at both locations or most of the day at both locations. We have rovers that go around that can assist with us. Um, we've got park staff that are there, checkout building staff, I think that was the idea. Um, but regardless, even if we don't have a permit process in place, if we don't want people to do that, we're gonna have to enforce it. Either way, we're gonna have to have enforcement.
So this goes back to, um, and I'm kind of on similar lines to, um, Councilmember Jeru. You know, with the sound permit, when, I remember I was sitting up here and I asked, how many sound permits, amplified sound permits have been pulled in a year? And the answer was four and I was two of the four and Chris was the third, uh, one of the, so between the council members, we had pulled three of the four sound permits. So my, I, I, to, to, to Councilmember Jeru's point, it's gonna be hard to, to manage one-on-one, one-on-one like practice, like someone, we're just pitching a ball here, we're not, it's gonna be hard, it's like, I just father son or it's, it's just my mentor, like that's gonna be very hard to manage. So, you know, at first I was leaning toward, you know, this sounds really good, but now as I think about it, I have, I think you're bringing up a great point that this is gonna be very hard to act, to, to administer.
Well, I think it's, that's why it's a pilot program, right? And that's why they're doing confined areas, see how it works, come back with feedback. Um, and these are just the one-on-ones. Any big groups are gonna have to go through their contractor program. You know, it's something we talked about touring around, about people using the park and blocking sidewalks and things. So it's kinda like our, our homestays, right? Make everyone get a permit so then we can tell people don't have permits, you can't be here.
Right.
People have permits, we can regulate where they go, what times, all that good stuff. Is it more work? Absolutely. But I think the parks department can handle it and let's see how they come back.
One thing, it doesn't say pilot program on here.
I thought you said it was a pilot.
Yes, sorry if we didn't write that in there specifically.
If it's a pilot and we have a certain amount of time and test out how it goes, that's a different situation. This is policy. It doesn't say pilot on the staff reports, that's why I'm a little confused. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're thinking that we're going to run this program and see how it goes and then determine, is it working, is it not working, what do we need to do to tweak it?
Can we, can we just put a timeline on that?
Yeah.
Mrs. Mancini, where you say you guys come back and, I don't know, whatever you think's reasonable, six months with the evaluation?
Six months. Six months would be a good, because we'll get through summer, we'll get through fall, I think that would be a great opportunity.
Okay.
So my apologies, I didn't write that out specifically.
Can we also, though, with the anticipation with the bigger groups, say, all bigger groups at any of our parks needs to go through our contract policy? Like, make that a blanket, so these, these groups just don't move to Washington Park or Sycamore Park and then we're back here.
Right.
I just would rather establish that policy, any larger other than one-on-one, any group of two or more, they need to go through our contract policy.
Right, that's, that's, that I definitely clarified that. Yes, and we, and, and the reality is this, this, we've already, we've always had the ability to enforce this. The, the language exists in the municipal code.
And then the other thing with our pools, too, you know, we have Hilltop Pool and hopefully eventually soon we'll have the plunge over. Um, you know, people do swimming lessons in our pools.
Right.
So that's another thing we have to think about, too.
Yeah, and we do, and I know that Joe and his team do a really good job and, and really what we look for, because I think you bring up good points about a father and a son playing baseball, really, we're looking for those people. It's very clear at Recreation Park over in this, on the corner, who's doing activity and who's not. They, they come regularly, they have equipment and, and it's just simple conversation. We're not gonna be out there running around like crazy people, but when we start to see there's, there's someone showing up regularly or they post on the parent network that they're offering a day camp in the park, then that's how we start to, then we start to use those things to enforce. So it's not gonna be a catch-all, um, but we hope it's a step in the right direction. And especially to the contract instructors that are giving us, you know, sharing their revenue with us. We feel like it's, it's, it's really fair to them to, to have some other system in place for these other folks.
Can I post, posit three things to you, Ally?
Yes, I know you're there, I hear you.
Uh, one is that you have to have a patrol mechanism to this to make sure they're not just going to other parks. The, two, you have to delineate who that enforcement authority is.
Right.
Whether it's, because people are gonna call the police.
Right.
Uh, so if they need to call you to enforce it, we need to make sure we know who's doing that. And thirdly, that if you contract or if somebody buys a permit to teach whatever thing in the park, understand to what extent that gives them a usage right.
Right.
Because if someone decides to set up their bootcamp in the middle of a seven-year-old soccer game, uh, we need to know who has the right of way there. Because that's where the rub will be. I, in, if by purchasing a fifteen-dollar permit, do they have a right to a spot? Or do they need to find a spot and they're subject to free use like everyone else, uh, in the park?
So those are good questions, yes. So with the permit in place, they would have to use a spot, a space that we've identified. So they would request, um, one of the locations on the map and then we would obviously have to take a look at what we have going on, you know, during the day and then either permit for that location or suggest another location based on what's available. So again, I think this helps us retain some control so we can deal with some of those issues you're talking about. Because obviously this wouldn't take precedence over Little League or, or any of the city activities. I mean, those, those, those would retain priority over these types of activities.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, we can move on to the city attorney reading the resolution by title only at this point.
Yes, Mayor and Council, a resolution authorizing limited permitted activities in public parks and establishing a fifteen-dollar hourly rental fee for the activities is ready for adoption.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Baldino will so move. Okay, sorry, I just want to make sure that we're gonna put a timeline on this and reword it in the whole nine yards, right?
We, we'll address the next one, uh, which is the, the, um, private instructor permit policy. So we could put that caveat on there.
All right, I'll second.
Pilot.
And then, uh, Jeru the second, Baldino with the first, and if you could please do a voice vote, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Baldino.
Yes.
Councilmember Jeru.
Yes.
Councilmember Persak.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel.
Yes.
And Mayor Boiles.
Yes.
Five oh.
All right, thank you. And then, uh, motion to approve the private instructor permit policy with the addition that it's a six-month evaluation and you come back with comments. Do we have a motion to approve that?
True.
Yep.
True. Uh, I'll be first or second, which one do we want to be?
Jeru with the first, Persak with the second. Okay, thank you. Then Madam Clerk, please, if you don't mind.
Councilmember Baldino.
Yes.
Councilmember Jeru.
Yes.
Councilmember Persak. Mayor Pro Tem Pimentel.
Yes.
And Mayor Boiles.
Yes.
Five oh.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Mrs. Mancini and to your staff, thank you. Okay, next up, item fifteen, El Segundo Police Department overview presentation and request for additional staffing and Chief Bermudas, right on cue.
Yeah, so while the chief's, uh, walking up, just, uh, a quick introduction to the item. Um, several months ago, the City Council created a Public Safety Ad Hoc Committee, made up the mayor and the mayor pro tem. This presentation kind of emanated out of our, I think, our first meeting, wherein, and we discussed several issues related to public safety and specifically the police department that Chief Bermudas will be discussing tonight in, in more detail. And I want to thank the chief and his, and his team for, for the time. We went back and forth on this over the last, uh, the last month or so and I want to thank you and your, and your staff for putting this together tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Uh, like the city manager was saying, I, uh, we prepared a presentation for council and for the community, kind of an overview of what, um, is going on at the police department and then, uh, some of the challenges we're facing and some of the technology we're using, some of the technology we're looking at. And then at the very end, we'll, I'll, I'll talk about some of my recommendations, uh, moving forward. So a, a quick overview of the presentation, um, I, I really want to talk about personnel staffing and patrol scheduling. That's gonna be a big, uh, it's gonna be a big challenge in the next couple of years. It's something that's impacting not only El Segundo PD but every law enforcement agency. Uh, crime data, talk about some trends, uh, primarily business expansion on the east side. That, that'll be a big part of this presentation. Like I said, the challenges, technology, and then at the very end, uh, police chief recommendations. Uh, so currently we're at sixty-two officers sworn, that's what, uh, we're authorized to have. We're at fifty-seven currently, out of those fifty-seven, um, we have three in the academy and we have two in field training. And so when I talk about the academy, they're gone, they're not at the, they're not at the police department. They're, it's a six-month academy. We find an academy in the region, either LA County, Orange County, Rio Honda, wherever we can put them in. And, uh, any police academy will be somewhere around five and, five to six months, so we don't see them for that long. Field training, we have two in field training. Field training, um, they're here, they're in uniform, but they, they can't work as a solo patrol officer. They're working under a field training officer. If they're an entry-level officer, they do that for seven months. If they're a lateral, they can do that, they can get off of training as quickly as two to three months. Currently, we have one entry level and we have one lateral officer. Um, the lateral officer just started on Monday, he came over from San Bernardino, so I'm pretty excited about that. In twenty-twenty-three, we've hired four officers and, um, also since, uh, the bonus was approved by council, we have, uh, eleven lateral officers currently in the pipeline, which is, um, I can't remember the last time we had that many laterals. So it, it definitely is working, so thank you for that. And then we have twelve entry-level officers, uh, currently in the pipeline. So I know not all of them will get hired. I know not all of them are just applying with El Segundo, they're applying with other departments, but if we can pick up even fifty percent of both pools, I think we're, we're on the right track. Current patrol shifts, so, um, I wanted to outline the way we deploy our officers. So currently we have five patrol schedules in patrol. On the weekdays, we have a four-ten and then on the weekends, we have a three-twelve, we have a hybrid schedule. Uh, on the weekdays, we have three patrol shifts, which is the day shift and then we have a swing shift, which is an overlap, and then graveyards, which comes in, in the evening and then they stay till the morning. That, that overlap shift that, uh, we call swing shift is really important because it, it, it helps us with our numbers during the busier times of, of the evening. On the weekend, we have two patrol shifts, we have the day shift and then we have the night shift. They were three twelves and that's Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Uh, we have, uh, two officers on the overlap shift. One of those officers is the K-nine and the other officer is a relief spot. So wherever we can move that officer, wherever they're needed, they, they can move. So it's not always that we have them there, but we try to shift, we try to schedule those, that shift, which is the two overlap. I wanted to, um, just. Um, I wanted to, um, describe kind of how we break up our patrol beats. Currently, we have three patrol beats in the city. One patrol beat is from the beach all the way to Sheldon, and then it covers all of, all of Chevron. Second patrol beat is Sheldon to Sepulveda, and then, uh, or PCH. And then patrol beat number three is everything east of PCH, all the way to the eastern border. It's been like this since I started in ninety-two. In fact, I went back and I talked to previous chiefs, and they said, uh, Jaime, that hasn't changed since they started back in the seventies. So these, this has been the layout of our patrol beats, uh, since the seventies that I can tell, and maybe even sooner than that. The area three has grown exponentially, obviously, over the last couple of years, but it's stayed the same. A little bit about crime data, so from twenty-one to twenty-two, overall crime dropped three percent. Uh, some of the crime trends that we're seeing is catalytic converter thefts, that's a huge one for us, and also just about everywhere in the state. In twenty-twenty-one, we, we show there a hundred and sixty-one, it went down a little bit. The same thing with retail store thefts, twenty-one just seemed to be a, a, a bad year for crime. Twenty-two went down to one-thirty-four, and then auto theft, uh, that one's been a tough one, and, uh, in talking to other chiefs, auto theft has really been drastically impacted by some of the policies. For whatever reason, auto theft has really hit hard a lot of, a lot of cities. Catalytic converters, I know there's, uh, different, uh, initiatives out there to try to help with, uh, the dealers and what they can buy. However, I, I really don't think they pay much attention to, uh, getting driver's licenses and who they can buy from. So it's, uh, right now, I've, I've read that certain cars, insurance companies aren't even, uh, covering a catalytic converter. They're just totaling the car because there's a five-to-six-month wait on a catalytic converter, so they're just totaling the car. So it's really unfortunate with that. Retail thefts, um, that's a big issue for us. Number one, because we have so much retail on the east side, and then also because of Prop forty-seven. So talking a little bit about the business expansion, uh, east of PCH. So if you look, then I, I, what I asked on this, uh, on this slide is to put some of our more frequent customers on the growth of retail on the east side of the city. Dick's Sporting Goods, Ralph's, if you, if you notice, they're all retail locations. Surprisingly, Ralph's, because of the liquor, two-hundred-and-fifty-three incidents, these are all incidents, uh, year-to-date for the year. Nordstrom's Rack. So the, these are pretty, they, they tax our patrol resources pretty heavily. And, um, you know, when we, when we hear concerns from residents about, our units are always on the east side of the city, primarily because we got a lot of cover, a lot of, uh, a lot of retail theft, and then we have a lot of retail locations east, east of, uh, PCH. Another one that I want to touch on, too, is, uh, hotels. So we have fourteen hotels in the city, over twenty-four-hundred rooms, and, believe it or not, hotels create a big tax on our resource also. Uh, when I was going over the data, uh, hotels, so a lot of the calls that we get at hotels, because we're in a nicer area compared to some of the areas, you know, closer to the sofi, we get a lot of party calls that take over several rooms. And so when we get calls, uh, we can't just send one car, we can't just send the three-car. We got to send all of our patrol resources. Sometimes we go to rooms and there's a party with twenty people, thirty people in a room, or adjoining rooms, and now we've got twenty, thirty people. We'll end up calling other agencies to help us. And it's not just about getting them out, because the hotel management says, hey, they're either smoking in the room, or they're being loud, we want them evicted. It's also about waiting till they get into their cars, so there's no vandalism in the parking lots, and there's no, um, damaging of hotel equipment as they're walking out. So these are pretty extensive calls that take a long time to clear, and they take a lot of resources from us, so.
Yeah, Jaime, I had one question.
Yes.
On the retail theft, now, these are the calls that we know of, but, I mean, a lot of retailers now at this juncture are not even reporting.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a great.
So like, what per, what, by what percentage do you think those numbers would be inflated by? And obviously, it's a guesstimate, but.
Yeah.
If you, if you were to give a number, would that be another twenty percent on top of that, thirty percent? And I know the trend is not to say anything anymore.
It's hard to tell, but I, I, I think twenty percent wouldn't be unreasonable, and part of the reason that we do get a lot of calls is the retailers still have a lot of confidence in El Segundo PD. Our area commanders, they go out and they meet with property managers at the, at the Point, the Plaza, at, uh, Walgreens, at Ralph's. We don't just, um, we don't just respond to the calls. Anytime we see a trend, our two lieutenants, uh, they will pick up on that, and they'll go out, and they'll meet with the managers, and they'll say, hey, we, we want you to call us. And these are some of the things that you can do to, to, uh, maybe harden the target a little bit. But, uh, we do get a lot of calls, but you're right, we, we, in some cases, when it's a small theft, I think some managers and retailers just say, hey, you know what, it's not even worth the call. And in some cases, they get direct, directions from corporate not to call us, we've heard that also. So, um, one of the things that I also wanted, yes?
Chief Bermudas, one question, do these incidents at Topgolf, uh, are they inclusive of incidents that arrive, arise when our officers are already there? Because we have officers patrolling that fairly regularly. Are these calls or things that occur while they're also already there?
This is everything, so any, any call for, if our officer goes out there, it, that's included in that number. So it could be that the officer drives by and observes something, and, uh, self-initiates, or a call. Anything related to Topgolf, it's, uh, it's included up there.
You, they're obligated under certain circumstances to staff our officers at the fully burdened rate? And, and does this include those periods?
Yes, yes. So police calls for service, um, I, I really wanted to highlight.
Chief, can I just, that one number on Ralph's has blown my mind, that's year-to-date, that's through June or through May? Through June, roughly, or?
Through June.
Yeah. I mean, that's like more than a call a day. That's, um.
Yeah.
What, are they typically, like, um, loitering, homeless, what kind of?
It's a variety, it could be theft, anything from theft to, um, people at the front, at the front bothering customers, homeless people asking for money, uh, and officers see somebody suspicious, decides to get out of the car and contact somebody, everything related to, to Ralph's.
Well, and it's, it's important to note that that hotel was, became a turnkey hotel. Remember, we didn't, we weren't informed of that, but then we found out after the fact that it was a turnkey hotel? Probably room key, sorry. Um, so that's a, that was a huge factor.
Yeah. So, uh, moving on to police calls for service, so we went back to twenty-seventeen. In twenty-seventeen through twenty-nineteen, the average of, uh, calls on the east side of the city, so if you'll remember the slide that I showed you with the three patrol beats, east of PCH, almost thirty-seven percent of all calls for service were in area three. Uh, from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-two, it went up to forty percent of all calls were in area three. And, um, as far as traffic, um, so I asked our traffic lieutenant, what's one of our biggest customers on the east side of the city? Da Vinci High School, continuous monitoring for safety, uh, for illegal turns, uh, people double parking, all kinds of traffic violations. So that, that's a big tax on our, on our traffic also. Majority of service calls were disturbance calls, burglary-related, uh, and that includes crime reports and burglary alarms, and then also nine-one-one calls and unknown trouble calls. So on the right, you see the line chart, uh, so we go from twenty-seventeen, uh, almost thirteen thousand calls to twenty-twenty-two, fourteen thousand calls. You're talking, uh, over thirteen hundred incidents. The difference, uh, in addition between, uh, the difference between twenty-seventeen and twenty-twenty-two. So law enforcement challenges, the first one, of course, Prop forty-seven. Prop forty-seven, twenty-fourteen, voter-approved, uh, it made, uh, several theft crimes misdemeanors. And so, um, that, that was a major flow, uh, blow to retailers. So it included theft, so anything under nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars became an automatic misdemeanor, with very few exceptions. If the arrestee was, uh, a sex registrant, I believe, or, um, had a, a strike, and those are very limited, then you could charge it as a strike, but, um, I haven't seen it since it passed. So, uh, Prop forty-seven has really impacted, uh, our retailers. Grand theft, all, it became all misdemeanors, everything under nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Uh, the jail closures from the county, I really wanted to highlight that. I don't think that's going away. If you'll remember, a couple of months ago, there was, uh, a motion at the, by the county board of supervisors to, um, depopulate the county jail. The county chiefs didn't find out about it until the day before, and that was, that was, uh, shocking. I went to a meeting with LA County Chiefs and nobody knew anything about it. And so th- there was a mad rush to, um, get the message out, uh, and so that was eventually pulled. But that, that'll continue, that'll continue. Emergency bail list, so, uh, if you'll remember during the pandemic, um, for public safety, health safety reasons, the courts initiated a, an emergency bail list where, uh, people weren't taken to jail to avoid COVID, getting into the jail system. And so what they initiated was, uh, if, if someone goes out and commits a crime, unless it was a very specific crime listed on this emergency bail list, the person got cited out. Uh, well, that went away a couple of weeks ago, or actually a couple of months ago. Effective May twenty-fourth, it's now back, the courts have implemented back i- in the county. So unless there is a violent crime, or very few exceptions on an emergency bail list, everyone is getting cited out on a ticket. And that includes, uh, retail theft, it includes, uh, grand theft, uh, unless it's a violent crime or domestic violence, and a couple other, a couple other violations, there's, there's a list, um, that's included.
Hey, Chief, if I can just add?
Yes.
A bill that just passed, you may have read, up in Sacramento, that prohibits now store employees from confronting shop, shoplifters, that just passed, so that's, you can probably add that to the list.
Yeah, that, that's, uh, making its way through the legislature, so, um, one thing I did want to, um, highlight is Prop forty-seven, what it also did, and what we're seeing a lot now is, so, repeat offenders, right? So prior to Prop forty-seven, if you were an officer and you got a call of retail theft, if someone was committing a theft, and you had probable cause to believe that that person went into the location with the intent to commit a theft, you could charge them with a felony, and that was burglary. So some people would walk in, they'd walk in with a bag that, um, they were, they were intent on filling with merchandise, or they had, um, pockets in their ju-, in their coats, where they would go in Best Buy and hide. You could, if you got, uh, probable cause, if you felt that that person went in there with the intent, and that could be done by evidence or by statements, uh, it was a felony. So that was a, that was, um, that was burglary. That went away, no more, uh, no more fel-, uh, no more four-five-nine burglary. So no more repeat offenders, people can go in, and, and as long as it's under nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars, they can go to one store, then go under nine-fifty to the next store, and then the next store, and then the next store. So, uh, I know that, uh, Assembly Bill seventeen-oh-eight is working to reverse some of that, because I think everyone realizes that was a big hiccup in Prop forty-seven, repeat offenders. I read, uh, AB seventeen-oh-eight, it's a start. The problem is, it, it requires repeat offenders to have two previous convictions. So if they don't have two previous convictions, the repeat offender violation doesn't apply to them.
Chief, we ran an event with Assembly member Meritucci, who is sponsoring this, and he informed us it's already died in committee.
Okay.
So it was a good start that hasn't even left our good friends in Sacramento.
Yeah, very unfortunate, I know that was supported by the California Police Chiefs Association.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, um, that was a step in the right direction, and so it's very unfortunate that it's not going anywhere. One thing I, I did want to highlight, so, um, I get an email anytime we get a significant, uh, crime, so I wanted to talk a little bit about an incident that happened earlier this month. We had, um, we had a burglary crime at the Plaza. Our officers went out there, um, we have access to the, the video cameras at the location. Our sergeant captured the crime on the camera after the fact, was able to look at the suspect's vehicle, gather a license plate, and actually see the suspects on video. We were able to find the license plate of the suspect on our ALPR system. We put a want in the system, the next day, the vehicle was, um, detained in Huntington Park. And, uh, we went out, captured the suspect, he still had some of the property in his pocket, and our detectives went out there, brought them back, and the suspect said, hey, how quickly are you going to cite me out? I was talking to the detective, and the detective's like, these guys, they know, how quickly are you going to cite me out? Very, um, discouraging. I mean, you, you, we go through all of this, and then the suspects, they know, hey, you know what, just cite me out, they, they know the rules.
When you say cite me out, he's basically saying, I know you can't hold me, I'm going to walk in there and walk out of there.
Exactly. Uh, when I say cite out, it's literally a traffic ticket.
A citation.
A citation, yeah. So prior to this, we had a, a bail schedule. And when someone came to jail, uh, depending on their crime, the jailer would go to this three-ring binder, uh, see the charges on, on the suspect, and then figure out what the bail was. So if it was burglary, for example, it'd be thirty thousand. If it was, um, you know, fraud, whatever it is, there was a bail schedule, kind of a legend, that's gone away. And the goal is, I think, at the state level, to do away with that. And lastly, I, I want to talk a little bit about hiring and recruitment. Like I said, the, the bonus has been a, a major hit for us, uh, it's been fantastic. People from certainly all over the county are stopping by, and, uh, we've had some great candidates. They come in and they take a tour of the station, and we try to, to hook on to them right away, so that's working out good. Unfortunately, we have eleven officers that are eligible to retire this year, I'm hoping to keep, uh, most of them. Talk a little bit about technology that we're currently using. So ALPR cameras, that's, uh, a couple of years ago, we came to council to get approval. We have AL, uh, they're automated license plate reader cameras, they're at various intersections throughout the city, uh, and those have been very good for us, we've solved a lot of crimes, they're very sophisticated, and, uh, we, we've used them with a lot of success. The LVT cameras, the Live View Technology cameras, we have one that, uh, we leased for a year, trying to see how it works out. Uh, we've used it at Topgolf, we've used it at Ralph's, we use it at our hotspots. And what that does is, um, it, it, it has solar power, so it allows our officers to log in remotely, and we can monitor the cameras. And, uh, primarily, it's a deterrent, so you see them throughout the South Bay shopping malls, and places where there's, uh, retail crime. We've used it at our parks, we've used it at Ralph's, and we used it at Topgolf, and, uh, we're hoping to get, maybe get more of those, depending on how good they work. Drone technology, we currently have, um, eight drones, and we have six pilots. We've had drones for a while, and that's, that, that's just constantly expanding. Uh, we were one of the first, along with Torrance, and now, uh, just about every South Bay city has at least some cone, some kind of drone capabilities. So those, I can, I only see that expanding and, and getting, uh, a bigger part of law enforcement. Yes?
I know we talked in the task force about Beverly Hills, I met with Mayor Julian Gold and others who are using, uh, drones as first responders.
Yeah, that's going to be my next slide.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Yeah, definitely, that's, uh, something I'm, I want to look at. Veritone, RIPA, so, uh, our RIPA, uh, information that we have to collect on every detention, we use Veritone. Uh, they've been very good. They've been very good. And also with our RIPA information, we current we just started posting it on our website as part of our transparent efforts. So we have a whole dashboard. Basically, all of our twenty twenty two information is posted on there. El Segundo Plaza, we have access to their point cameras. And so that's how we identified some suspects during the previous burglaries. Technology, this is some of the technology that we're currently reviewing. Star Chase, Lieutenant McEnroe was looking at that. We actually had the company come to El Segundo and do a demo for us, and we invited agencies. So that's that's it's it's pretty unique. In a pursuit, they become very dangerous. And a lot of times, our officers back off of a pursuit when they start running red lights or when they start driving too fast. Star Chase is technology where there's a device that's installed on the front bumper of a police car. And as the car is taking off, it literally shoots a magnetic GPS sensor on the vehicle. And it's both magnetic and also kind of a silicone. It sticks to the vehicle, and then you can let the car go, and you can go back and get it with GPS technology. Drone first responder, a lot of agencies that initially had their own drone program are now going to a different model because it it creates a big tax on resources. So you hire a company that comes in, and they basically are the pilots for your drone program. And as soon as the call comes out, the drone is already on its way. It can either clear a call or it can provide officers that are en route to the call greater information about what to expect when they get to the call. Flock mobile cameras, they're basically a competitor to our to our existing A O P R system. The good thing about Flock is that they can be mobile. So our challenge with putting A O P R cameras on P C H is you got to work through Caltrans to to get power, which is very, very difficult. In some cases, it's impossible. Flock cameras, you put them on a trailer, and they work with solar power and or battery powered, and then you can move them around as you need them. So if we had a hotspot in the city, we would have three or four Flock cameras, and we could put them, we could deploy them as we as we see necessary. And then Live nine one one, that's something that we got to work through our dispatch center. That allows the officer in the car to hear the nine one one call real time. And so that's that's currently being used in Santa Monica, Anaheim. And so I'm looking to put it here in El Segundo. Community outreach, you saw the that I introduced Serena today. That's, I mean, we've been waiting a long time for for that position to fill. And I think this is that's going to be great with some of the things that we're expecting. A lot of our so our outreach comes from that position. We also have monthly security directors meetings where we meet directors from security companies all over the city with our business partners. Our area commanders meetings, I'd like to do those more frequently. Coffee with a cop, National Night Out, which is coming up in August, and then victim assistance programs. And then also our volunteer program, I'd like to maybe expand that. And our neighborhood watch meetings, I know we haven't had those in a while. But Serena knows that's a big that's a big part of her job, and she's already starting on that. Transparency, so like I talked earlier about RIPA, the Racial and Identity Profiling Act, there's sixteen data points that each one of our officers has to collect on every detention. Twenty 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 two was the first year that we collected the entire year. So that was that was a big step for us, getting a vendor to come in and facilitate the collection of the data so that it 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 impacts very little as our officers do their their work out in the field. And then use of for audits, I know the mayor, you you brought this up recently. So that's a process that we've already started. We've already completed that with the city manager and the city attorney's office. That that's ongoing. And lastly, crime data, we're posting our crime data with the new Cybers format on our website. And Cybers is just used to be U C R, Uniform Crime Uniform Crime Reporting Format. Now FBI is moving to NiBRS, which is Cybers in California. But it's it's supposed to be more accurate to what's going on. And so every incident now you count every crime that happens as opposed to previously where it was the most serious crime that was counted. So moving on to recommendations, seeing that forty two percent of our calls are on the east side of P C H. I remember when, after five thirty in the evening, everything east of Sepulveda was basically dark. It was shut down. And that car, unless there was a call, could could spend most of its time on the west side. That's no longer the case. Forty two percent of our calls are east of P C H. Growth of businesses, schools, hotels, east of P C H. We're also, I know that the issue of housing east of P C H has come up. That's something that we have to, at least on the P D side, we have to maintain an eye on. Larger crowds, locations like Top Golf, thefts from hotels, Plaza El Segundo and the Point, and also increased traffic. The more businesses, the more entertainment, the more traffic comes in from from all over all over the region. So this is currently how we do our current patrol beats, one, two, and three. My recommendation, I want to go to four patrol beats and maintain one and two. And east of P C H, everything south south of El Segundo Boulevard becomes a fourth patrol beat. So that's going to require adding officers to the department. By doing this, we maintain a greater balance in our in our deployments, and it allows us to better respond to calls, whether it's hotels, retail theft, having that extra car. Recommendation, like I said, we have five shifts. So I want to add five officers, one added to each existing patrol shift. Two officers in a for that overlap shift on the weekends. So I'd like to have an overlap shift. And then add one sergeant to supervise that overlap, which is going to be four officers. So every team in patrol will have a sergeant. I also want to add one detective. The amount of crime that we're getting from, for example, our hotels and our retail, it calls for an additional detective. You know, one of the things that I was telling our city manager, some of the crimes at our hotels like are pretty involved. We've had we've had date rapes there where we have to send two or two detectives out of state because people come in, they stay in our hotels, they're from Arizona, they're from a neighboring state, and all of a sudden, they're making allegations. We got to send our detectives out there to investigate. And so that that's a big ask of our small detective division. And also one traffic motor officer for greater traffic enforcement. So that that equates to nine officers and one sergeant with my recommendation. And also lateral officer program. I know that we put a deadline of September twenty twenty four. So far, it's been a great success. And if we continue to have that level of success, I will come back and renew that because we're going to need it. And then also the ten thousand dollars for referrals for city employees. That's the officer that we hired just recently from outside. He's already bringing over two people from his old department. So it's a cycle, and I want to see that continue, and I think that's great. And then also, one of the things that I learned from talking to other other chiefs is they're having great success when you have a good candidate to right away kind of get him invested in in the department. And so there's a couple of ways you do that. It's not just about go to E S P D dot org or join E S P D. It's about bringing them in, having them meet the chief, maybe taking them out to lunch, giving giving them a tour of the station, giving them a ride along, those things that as soon as you got them, we're going to keep them here. And then that way, he goes and says, hey, nobody else is doing this for me. This is fantastic. I want to be part of that. I'm looking to hire a retired officer to really help our personnel sergeant. He's more in charge of the applications, the checking in, all of that. The retired officer will come in and do all of those things that I want him or her to do so that officer is right away invested into E S P D.
Chief, is that retired officer eligible for the referral bonus?
No.
Okay.
No. And so we we I'm working with H R to really, I think we already have a retired officer that's interested in doing it, and so I'm excited to bring that person on. It's the right person. So with that, I know it was a lengthy presentation, but I wanted to put as much information in there. I know it's it's a it's a big ask, but looking forward to all the things that are coming into the city and what I think we need to do to prepare for that. I think it's important to to really up our numbers. And then lastly, I do want to acknowledge the officers that are doing the work despite all these challenges that are out there with at the county level, the state level. They're going out there, and they're working hard, and they're still doing a good job to maintain safety in our community. So I'm really proud of that. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Well done. Questions, comments?
Can you
Chief, what's the average age of our of our officers? If you had to guess?
Well, I would say over the last four to five years, we've become a very new department. And that brings its own challenges where we have a lot of new officers in patrol. And then even within our supervisory and command structure, you know, we have a we have a badge pinning ceremony coming up next week. You're going to notice like the lieutenants, the captains, the sergeants, they're everyone's coming up quick because people are retiring. And so the days of staying in one rank for eight, nine years, and then moving on to the next one, those days are gone. It's like you do two years, and then you better be ready because you're moving up to the next one. That brings challenges for me because in a way, I have to make sure that things are done right and and things are done to our standards. So it's all about mentoring, and it's all about training, and it's all about making sure that people get the most exposure in a very quick amount of time so that they're ready for the next level.
Can you, Chief, put back up your recommendation slide there? It might help out a little bit. But first of all, great presentation. I really appreciate the fact that, you know, it's obviously not just an ask, but a background as to why you need it, what's going on, what the what the what the future holds and everything. So I appreciate it very much. So one of the things I noticed at the beginning of the presentation was the amount of calls you're getting from certain areas, and the majority of it being east of P C H. But Rouse and then really the stuff at Plaza El Segundo, you know, you had Dick's, you got Nordstrom Rack. That's federal realty, okay? Is there because adding all this is great, and I think we're going to need it. But it's only one part of the approach. There has to be a more we we need to be able to lend some help there. Can we get on federal realty? What can you do from a from a private security to to put things out there? We're parking a car in front of Dick's Sporting Goods, I see it all the time. I ran into Officer Black at Nordstrom Rack the other day as I was returning my umpteenth thing for my daughter. And I looked at him, and I joked, and I said, hey, we should probably put a satellite office for you guys out here. And he looked at me, and he says, this is the second time I've been here on my shift. And this is occurring all of the time. He says, I'm just, this is what I'm doing all the time. So there has to be a way we can get some assistance from from those, you know, areas. And Rouse has been a problem forever. And every now and again, they'll throw a security guard out there that does absolutely nothing. I think contributes to the problem. So I do think that we need to help on top of this piece of it because this is going to help significantly, but it's not going to it won't solve a hundred percent of a hundred percent. So I do think there has to be something we can do as a city to get with these landowners of the areas and help that out. Is that possible? Top Golf, again, a lot of calls. Have we had conversations with them? Because I know you have new management, and that they have not been quite as responsive as the old management. Is that
So Top Golf, the city manager, myself, and Barbara Voss, Assistant City Manager, and in some cases, other staff from City Hall, we meet with them sometimes monthly, sometimes every other month. But that is part of the conversation that we have with them. And it's a challenging environment because we've talked about we've talked about metal detectors. We've talked about a address code. We've talked about different options. And I get their point also. It's an entertainment, and anytime you go there and you see metal detectors, it can spook customers. But they're they're in a tough position. But yeah, there's something more needs to be done.
So also the ask to get up to seventy two, I think we talked about this. By the time you get to seventy two, three, four guys are going to retire, right? And it takes eighteen months from even for a cadet to get up and running in in the in in the in your department anyway, correct? So even to give you latitude to get up to there, it's going to take a while to get to there unless we get a magic number of laterals, which probably isn't going to happen.
It's it's going to take us years to get to seventy two. It really is. And that's if we hold on to everybody we've got and then hire, maybe we'll get there faster. But with the amount of retirements and the amount of, you know, we have right currently, we have one one expected retirement July sixteenth. We have another one who's leaving the state, and that's in addition to some of the retirements. So I'm hoping they don't all pull the plug at the same time. But if we hired all of our laterals, twelve, it would just put me back to zero if everyone decided to leave. So it's going to be a constant machine that we got to get going. And every every agency is dealing with it. And I went to the last police chief meeting that I went to. I think most of the chiefs wanted to strangle me when they heard about our bonus. But I we got to we got to get people in the door. And so next month, it'll be another agency. And so we're constantly competing. It doesn't solve the problem. We've got to get people interested in 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 the profession. And I don't know how we do that long term, but hopefully, the trend is starting to change a little bit.
Got you. Cork, it's four more years. Thank you. I'm going to let my colleagues comment. But again, great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
The question is for us, and how do we pay for this? Right? I mean, I need Dino or someone from finance to to map out if we go to seventy two, what's that going to be looking like in five years? What's that going to look like in ten years? Our largest expense is our police department. I think it's money well spent. I appreciate everything you guys do. I know it's a hard job. But if we say yes to that, what does that do to our financials? I think we need to know that piece before we we agree to go to seventy two. I would like to say yes, great. But what are the long term implications for our budget and for everything else that we need to do? And I don't know how we get to that answer, right?
I agree. One of that's one of the reasons why we push so hard on the business license fee tax or fee to increase that for the hotels, because we recognize that they were paying a very small fee, but getting a lot of service. So I know one of the things we had asked, and I'm not sure if we can actually do it, is if do we require hotels to have their own security? If there's actually X over a certain amount of calls? Like, can we, back to your point, can we put institute some types of things to require people to have security? And that would be my own thing.
One of the things that we did was, for example, Top Golf, they're required, as part of their permitting process, they're required to have officers there and on the weekends or or at the chief's discretion. The problem is, if I don't have the bodies, I'm redeploying them to patrol because I just can't staff two officers at Top Golf while we're getting a bunch of patrol call patrol calls. So it just it it snowballs, right? And so the more bodies I get, I can start kind of deploying to Top Golf. I can do I know Chevron has their own, they pay for an officer, and then South Bay Lakers. We have a lot of asks in our business community where they ask for an officer.
You're saying the problem, even though they ask for it, and they're reimbursing us that expense, which is great, you don't have enough bodies to to deploy all that and patrol our streets?
No, not right now.
I think the answer, Councilman Baldino, is roughly two and a half to three million incrementally before any increases annually. And so we've been really good fiscal stewards up here for quite a while, made some really tough decisions, trade offs on a bunch of resources and projects, and fixed our reserve footing, fixed our pension obligations in a large way, set aside money for the first time in decade for capital improvement projects. So while I'm usually one of the first to ask that question, and it's one of my biggest concerns, I believe that we need to wholeheartedly invest in this. I believe everything the chief is telling us. And I believe you're going to embrace the technology, which I think will And I believe you're going to embrace the technology, which I think will give us significant advantages as well. And I also think we need to, we need to adapt. I mean, if, it sounds like this is the same model we've had since the seventies. Having lived here for twenty-five years, whatever it's been now, and seeing the change that the city has been through and will continue to go through. I absolutely believe we need to make this investment. And I think our residents would absolutely feel the same way. If we went to the ballot box tomorrow and it was up to them, we'd get probably ninety percent approval on doing everything we could to make sure that this city remains absolutely safe for our residents and our businesses. So we had, I had more time to think about it because we had, Chris and I were privy to this conversation as part of the task force. So anyway, that's why I feel more prepared, I guess, to answer it. But that would be my opinion on it.
So real quick on-
Mr.-
Oh, just real quick, on the, you know, the, the, the permitting deals that we make with like the Lakers, Topgolf, is there any additional ones we could be making like with federal realtor and require them to cover the cost of if, of a, of a, a police officer, given all the theft that's been going on there? Like, should we be exploring, expanding that program so that we can regain some of that money back to offset the cost of the city?
Yeah, that's something that I'd, I'd have to talk to our city attorney staff to see if maybe that can be done from the very beginning.
Yeah, with, with some of these developers, when we had development agreements or with, with Topgolf, it's a leased property, a city-owned property that was leveraged by the city to negotiate for those type of things. With federal, we don't necessarily have that. But that doesn't mean, I know in the past, CDC, MAR, when there were issues on their properties, they stepped up and paid for some additional assistance. And it could be the federal realty's doing that can do that also. And I know, I'm not part of those discussions, but oftentimes the police department's very successful in dealing with the property owners and, and getting them to do additional things to reduce the number of calls for service on their properties.
Couple of things on, on the, to your point, on, on the seventy-two, I think what we talked about is we may never actually get there. There's probably a better chance of us not getting there than there is of us getting there.
Yeah, at least in the next couple of years.
Right. But the, but the idea, obviously the financial piece of it is a big deal. So I'm wondering if there's a way that we can word this so that seventy-two does not become the new norm. Okay? Seventy-two is the situation that we're in right now. It may be a situation five years down the road. I don't know. But I know that does end up being a sticking point because all of a sudden we'll sit there and say, well, we used to have seventy-two, now we have sixty-two. Is, is there a way to word this so that we have, we're giving you latitude to hire what you need, but doesn't necessarily become, that's our now new staff level? And then it becomes a, a point of contention in every negotiation that comes every three years. So I want to give you the latitude to get your jobs done, but I also don't want to stick every council that comes after me up here with a number that might not be necessarily financially possible.
I really think seventy-two, sir, is, I think it's a reasonable number. I, I know there's the numbers behind it as far as financial. But if, if we're going to run a police department that is going to respond to these calls and maintain safety, we, we really need to be well-staffed at that, at that number.
So also just thought of something, if you're fully staffed at seventy-two, does that technically reduce overtime?
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. That was actually in my notes. So currently we're staffing some shifts on overtime. And if I get to seventy-two, it, it requires less overtime.
You know, if I can add also, Councilmember Drew, you know, I, I don't think, you know, it's not like we're going to be budgeting this two-point-five, three million dollars day one. As you know, we bring to you as part of the budget process, a, a workshop every year. So that gradual increase to seventy-two will happen over however many years. And incrementally, that budget will come before you, whether next year it's three, following year it's another three. So it'll be coming to you in, in kind of, as I said, incrementally through the budget process and through our budget workshops to have detailed discussions on the numbers.
You know, to Councilmember Drew's point, though, you know, like, let's say three years from now, pendulum swings the other direction and we have a new DA, we have a new legislature in the assembly and we actually get back to more reasonable policies in terms of crime and enforcement. And we have a DA that wants to prosecute. You know, maybe at that point, that's the time to say, okay, crime, crime is down, crime has dropped. And I, I think where, where you're coming from, Lance, and I, I hear that, I feel you, is just basically we set this new threshold. It's going to be really hard from a public optics standpoint and from the police department's standpoint, say, okay, crime is really down. Or maybe, maybe our revenue takes another big hit like it did in the last, in the Great Recession during COVID. We have to make some adjustments down and that would be a tough political position to be in. And I think that's where you're coming from. And yeah, I'm, I'm all for actually all the recommendations. They just don't want to put us in a situation that we can't adjust if necessary down the road. That's all. I'm, I'm all for it. I'm fine with-
Can I weigh in? Just, I think that, that, you know, Councilmember Drew brings a point that the mayor was emphasizing there, that, that it took the Great Recession. We were, we were staffing a police department at nineteen ninety-three crime rates in two thousand and seven. It wasn't until the Great Recession that we, that we recalibrated sort of our deployment plans. So if we need to specify this as, you know, our, our department is a sixty-two officer department, seventy-two is contingencies, like the proverbial overseas contingency budget that the DOD uses. If we need to do that and, and call it something different, I think that's, that's okay. We have the ability certainly through natural attrition in the coming five years to winnow down. So if we go to seventy-two in two years, but really we need sixty-six, we don't have to reduce headcount. We, we just don't fill retirements, right? So, so that part makes it somewhat easier to, to calibrate. So if we need to sort of label something, we'll put, you know, something in our proverbial diary that in, you know, two thousand and twenty-six, we're going to revisit this number, that's okay. But to emphasize the mayor's point, the first reason organized, people organize governments is to protect themselves. And, and right now, I think it is prudent to go to seventy-two to protect ourselves, even if that signs up a council of twenty-twenty-eight to a, a difficult political decision about reevaluating staffing levels. I, 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 you know, I would, I would give generously out of our, out of our reserve budget to emphasize the public safety here in El Segundo.
I, I would say I, I do want to emphasize, I know we talked about it, it's going to be very difficult to get to seventy-two. I can't emphasize that enough. I mean, I have eleven people that are eligible. If, if I'm able to keep half of them, let's just say I, I beg the other, like the six and say, hey, can you stay a little longer? It's still, it's going to be difficult even with that. And so seventy-two, it's, it's going to be difficult. I, I don't want to set up an expectation that in a year we're at seventy-two or even two years, it, it, it could take time.
No, I, Chief, I'm not actually arguing the seventy-two number at all. I, I agree with you on it. I'm just saying, is there a way we can classify what we call those extra, is it, is it, is it a, up to sixty-seven and five or over hires? Or I, I don't know what the wording is. I want you to get to where you need to be, but I just got to figure out a way to-
As a suggestion, as, as we move, since it's going to take us time to get to seventy-two, as a suggestion, if during that process, I notice that crime is either leveling off or going down or whatever, the, the, the environment changes, we can always stop. We, I can always say, you know what, things have leveled off. But until that time, I think we need to move forward and we need to, we need to have that seventy-two number ready to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protime, did you have a suggestion on wording?
Uh, if, if we need to say that, if we need to codify in the policy document that we view the natural end strength of our police department as sixty-six officers or sixty-two officers, and that we are at seventy-two, you know, dealing with specific contingency. At least that gives us a policy guideline. So when we go back in history, like, or when a future council goes back in history and says, what's the appropriate staffing level? It gives them a data point to anchor from. Certainly we've gone back to the archives to see the different staffing levels for the department. So if we want to put in our staffing policy that, you know, a, an asterisk that says this is what we view as a, a sort of special period of time that allows us to go from sixty-two to seventy-two, I, I would presume we can just wordsmith that. On the other hand, to, 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 I guess, to, to address something the chief just said, I'm not as pessimistic. If, if we want to get young officers, I, I think we'll be able, in, in the hiring environment we'll see in the coming years, I, I think they're out there. I know that certainly some of the military services are shrinking headcount. There will be, there will be young people willing to serve on the streets. We just have to go get them and steal them away from San Diego.
Mr. Henley, do you have a suggestion here?
This, this process is going to take some time to implement. And I understand the concern based upon the labor negotiations and the applicable rules here in the state of California and whatnot. And so I think if you wanted to authorize it up to seventy-two officers, you know, that's the goal. And as this gets implemented over the next few years, because there'll be budget decisions to be made and whatnot, we can work with our labor council and make sure that the protections are in place so that if in the future that number needs to change, it doesn't take, you know, two years of negotiation to have that occur. I mean, tonight you're really, you're setting a goal, but there's going to be a lot of decisions and, and financial decisions be made to implement all of this.
That sounds reasonable. How's the council feel about that? Good? Okay. Do we have a, we have two things before us. One is just consensus to receive and file. And Chief, I think we have that. Great job again on the presentation.
Thank you.
Second one is a motion approving the request for up to seventy-two offers to be evaluated in pretty much an annual budget cycle, it sounds like. So moved?
First, second?
Second.
Thank you.
Me, then Carol.
Drew, then I think first, oh, was it Pimentel?
Oh, he tried. He getting at the buzzer.
Okay. Pick one. They both did. And then Madam Clerk, voice vote, please.
Councilmember Baldino?
Yes.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Firstst?
Yes.
Mayor Protime Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
Passes by them.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you for the-
Thank you all. Appreciate your support. All right, we're going to take a quick recess. It's seven forty-one. Back in session. We're on to item sixteen. El Segundo Connect Pilot Transportation Program, and I believe Mr. Delgado is gonna present. I see him walking up. Awesome. Thank you. Good to see you, Mr. Delgado.
Good evening, council. Great to see you all. See if we get our presentation up here, and we will begin. While waiting for it to load, I just want to thank Commissioner Lee Davis and Commissioner Kelly Watson for all the months, weeks, a lot of hours that came to coming up with El Segundo Connect. We had a lot of Monday meetings, and it was well worth it. And in front of you is what we have. Oops. I can do Hi-Maze again.
The shuttle will go to Zone Three. But not the new Zone Four.
Thank you, Elias.
Our Public Works Director is now working IT?
Yes.
He does it all. Jack of all trades.
All right, excellent. So this is a new pilot program. We're going to be calling it El Segundo Connect. It's a transportation program. A little background on the committee. We started in two thousand nineteen with the goal to review the city's offering and identify possible improvements for walkability, bikeability, environmental needs, and just provide better and overall service to our residents and guests. So like I said, going back to our old director, Meredith Pettit, Arisia, Lee and Kelly, we came up with the idea for El Segundo Connect. As you know, during the pandemic, we lost a lot of our shuttle services and our abilities to offer transportation. And it so kind of offered us a nice blank slate, and this is one of the programs in its place. So the pilot program will run from September fifteenth to November fifteenth. We're gonna utilize the current beach shuttle to advertise some of this if approved. Ridership data will be collected during this time and reviewed after the pilot program. At that time, we'll take all the data to commission. The pilot program will offer sixteen stops throughout El Segundo, run Monday through Friday, eleven-thirty a.m. to six p.m. As you know, we currently partner with Swoop for our beach shuttle, and we would partner with them as well for this program. Survey will be conducted prior to and the beginning of the program and at the end of the program to make sure we are hitting all of our marks. And during the whole duration of the program, my email is available and feedback is welcomed. We will get you there. So all the different spots that we came up with through the committee and a survey that Commissioner Watson conducted is our lunchtime shuttle service. So it's going to hit businesses east of PCH and transport them down to downtown El Segundo, to all of our nice restaurants, and link those two sides of town. First mile, last mile is a term in transportation. When you ride the metro, getting from the metro station to your business or your destination is kind of difficult. So this will have a stop near the metro station that will connect all of our public transportation, again, to downtown El Segundo and our businesses. We'll be providing transportation to all of our sports facilities, Campus El Segundo, Aquatic Center, Toyota Sports Center, and then back to residential El Segundo. One of the features that Swoop has, which is great with the beach shuttle, it's been a hit at Jocelyn, is there'll be QR codes at all of the stops where you can scan the QR codes, and you will be able to see where the shuttles are at in their current route. This is going to be the route and the sixteen stops. We will have two shuttles that will start, one on the east side and one on the west side. Estimated total route time is about twenty-eight to thirty-two minutes. An estimated wait time will be fourteen to seventeen minutes. There's, you know, as I said, Mariposa and Continental and Nash will hit our metro station. We will have a stop right down the street from the Wiseburn and El Segundo Aquatic Center, as well as Campus El Segundo, Toyota Sports Center, and then take you down all the way to the library, great restaurants along Richmond and Main Street. And it's a modified route of what we ran with the lunchtime service, which was a very successful route. Guess that was kind of quick, but thank you, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you for being kind of quick. I think it's a great idea. Are you gonna, how are you gonna advertise to the companies east of PCH?
I will reach out to Martha and utilize Chamber of Commerce. We will have kind of like the current beach shuttle stops that we have. If you see, we will have those at all of the different stops with the QR code. I do plan on putting a QR code on there that'll take you directly to our website as well, where the transportation section is, and it'll have all of this information listed out.
Great.
I have one question. So this is expanded at the time, because the lunchtime shuttle only went to like two or something?
Two fifteen.
So this goes to six p.m.?
This will go to six p.m. So that we're able to hit, again, the sports facilities. You know, practice starts picking up in the later evening hours. You still have adults that are, you know, trying to get back on the four oh five and some of the difficult freeways. So we'll be able to get, you know, participants over to those sports facilities. That's when we'll rely on some of the adult pickup for that. And then as well, if you're getting off work at five o'clock, need to get to the metro station, it'll get you there.
And then, so obviously the outreach will be, have to be different than the lunch, the lunch shuttle, because lunch shuttle was really the business-centric. So this is an expanded program that really benefits both the residents and the business.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, so giving this information to some of the sports leagues, our different, you know, the sports facilities and getting that out there. Jocelyn, we're kind of a hub for MTA and metro information, so we'd have that as well.
You know, I was just thinking, it just popped in my head. So it's just totally off the wall. You know, we were talking just earlier about some of the hotels paying us back for the services. Maybe as a give-back, we could stop, they could, we could partner with on the hotels who does service to the airport, and we could stop at the hotel, drop off people who could ju- jump on an airport shuttle. I mean, that would be, just as a give-back to us providing such great service on the police partners and just...
No, and absolutely. There are definitely more talks within the Transportation Committee about future plans. LAX possibly being one of them, and working with our hotels to possibly bridge that is definitely one of the future considerations down the road.
Yeah, I mean, especially given that we can't charge them for the policing, but we can maybe give back something, give back something to the community. All right, and then, so the pilot program is for how long?
September fifteenth, all the way till November fifteenth. I'm sorry, August fifteenth. It's a three-month pilot program.
Okay, perfect. And then with the sports teams, especially when kids are in the summer season, you may want to shift the hours depending on the ridership and then go back to during school year. You know, I just want to make sure we, when we do this and we actually look at the data, we look at the different timeframes of when kids are in school versus not in school.
No, absolutely. As you know, Commissioner Watson has a really good pulse on a lot of our youth sports league, and she took a lot of consideration in with those times and how we can accommodate them as well.
Perfect. Well, good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you, can you guys measure ridership where they're going? Because I would be very, is that gonna be part of Swoop's responsibility or?
Yeah, Swoop will track all of that data for us. They were really great with our beach shuttle metrics, what stops were the hotspots, where they pick up riders, where they're dropping off riders. So they provided some really good summer data from our previous summer.
Okay, and then can you, it would be good to have the trips and the hotspots, most frequented, et cetera, but also segmentation by daypart?
Yeah.
Because I would, personally, I would love to see what's happening with the lunchtime thing, because what I'm hearing from restaurants in town is, you know, a lot of restaurants aren't even serving lunch yet again, because so much of the workforce is still not back. So I'd love to see how the lunchtime in particular works. I'm hoping it works well.
Absolutely. And one of the things I still have is, and we use some of this data to put together this, but I have a lot of good lunchtime shuttle statistics pre-COVID. And so we can even compare and contrast pre-COVID, post-COVID with this program.
Good to see.
Absolutely.
Great.
I did have one question. On the QR, when a rider decides to go on the shuttle, do they have to show anything, prove anything, or just for safety, since we're gonna encourage kids to be riding these buses and we're stopping near the metro, I just want to make sure that there's...
For now, it'll be similar to our beach shuttle. And then like past with the lunchtime shuttle, they did not need to show any type of ID or anything like that if they're a businessperson. So presumably someone in town could have just taken the lunchtime shuttle for a quick little spin. We will look at implementing cost or fees, whether it's a rider, like a rider card, membership after the pilot program.
If we're gonna encourage our youth to be taking these shuttles, especially for sports, and we are stopped, one of the route is by the metro, I just want to make sure that we're ensuring that there's safety.
Absolutely, yes.
Mayor Proton, you gonna say something?
Can I recommend that we also make sure that, not make sure is the wrong term. We may be wise to get this information through the chamber or some of the area groups, because we have some of our most parking-constrained areas in Smoggy Hollow, where we have off-site parkers for businesses. And this could be of enormous benefit to them if they have people who are parking east of PCH and looking to get into the Smoggy Hollow area. So it may be interesting to make sure those people are aware that this is an opportunity to ride the shuttle.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can utilize some of the registered businesses through building and planning and reach out to them. So if there's a good email contact list internally, we can push out this information to them as well.
Okay, last question I think for me is, do you, do we have a way to know, I know it's till six p.m., do we have a way to determine some demand from the hotels, maybe during the day, that would give us some insight into evening, whether or not it makes sense to bring all these hotel patrons downtown? I know our restaurants would appreciate that.
Yeah, not currently. And I'd have to review to see if any of the hotels actually offer any of that transportation on their own. But that's something we could try and figure out and get back to you.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, it would be a value add for the hotels, and it would be certainly helpful for the businesses downtown. So, okay. That'd be useful to know, too.
Absolutely.
If there's a way to figure that out. Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, so we are, let's see, we got motion to approve, which is the public, or the proposed pilot public transportation program. Do we have a motion to approve? Sheriff Baldino, so moves. Thank you. Second.
Drew, second. Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Absolutely. Councilmember Baldino?
Yes.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Firstak?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
Passes five of them.
Thank you. Good work. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Item seventeen, establish the communications coordinator part-time classification. Adopt classification specification and resolution to establish the basic salary range. And Mrs. Reddick is up here. Hi.
Mayor and council members, this item tonight is basically a repurposing of budgeted funds that we already have. It's a clarification of duties into a separate job classification. We currently have the Senior Video Technician Two classification, which encompasses communications duties in that job spec. We have had difficulty in recruitment and trying to find people specifically with communication skills and the requirements needed. So basically, we're taking the duties of the communications piece out of the Senior Video Tech Two, creating a separate job spec. There is no fiscal impact to this item. It's the same budgeted funds. It's just gonna help us in finding the right people to work communications.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, you answered all my questions right there in the presentation. That was perfect. Do we have a budget for this? Is it a new position? No, we're just making it make sense.
Clarifying.
Perfect.
I would like to suggest that we approve the establishment of the Communication Coordinator Classification as well as adopt the Classification specification for the Communications Coordinator as one motion, unless someone's opposed. Let's do the first two, because the third one requires, yeah. Do we have a motion to do so?
First, second move.
Great. First, click on the first.
Drew, second.
Great. Madam Clerk, voice vote, please.
Absolutely. Councilmember Baldino?
Yes.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Firstak?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
Five of them.
Great, thank you. And then, Mr. Henley?
A resolution establishing basic hourly salary range for a part-time job classification, ready for adoption.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion to approve?
Drew, so moved.
Boiles on the second. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Baldino?
Yes.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Firstak?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
You pass five of them.
Thank you, Mrs. Reddick. Appreciate it. All right, next up, item eighteen, Erosari Swim Stadium, AKA The Plunge. Project status update regarding the design, estimated construction costs, and schedule. Mr. George?
Yes, Mayor. I believe our Public Works Director, Elias Sassoon, will be taking the lead on this item with his design team.
Thank you, Mr. George. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. This item before you is to provide you with an update regarding The Plunge. That's design, cost, and schedule. And I would like to ask Michael Wall and Tom Moore with IBI and Mr. Dennis Berkshire with ADG to, if you would, they're gonna be making that presentation, and we'll be glad to answer any question that you may have afterwards.
Thank you. Before you guys begin, I just want to disclose that on June fourteenth, I took a tour of The Plunge with staff and with Carol, so just so everybody knows. Please, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Happy to be here today. And again, I'm Tom Moore, Associate Director, Senior Principal with... You're gonna see on the slide Arcadis. We're actually Arcadis now. They bought us. But I'd like to introduce Michael Wall, and then we'll introduce our pool consultant, Aquatic Design Group, Dennis, and I'll have him introduce himself. Thank you.
So this will be a updates on the project progress, as well as describing some of our decisions with the pool equipment. And that's why we have Dennis here as our expert for the pool consultant. I'll render just to mind you all what the front will look like. Just an update with how, sorry, with making sure it's accessible and providing safe entrance and exit. So now we're gonna go into the pool equipment, and I'm gonna leave it to Dennis.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi, I'm Dennis Berkshire with Aquatic Design Group. We're an architectural engineering firm that specializes... We're an architectural engineering firm that specializes in public swimming pools. We've designed facilities now in forty-five states and twenty-four countries, doing over five thousand public sector projects. One of the first things that we had to take a look at is the chemical treatment system for the pools. You know, first thing I always preface our chemical treatment discussion by saying, we're not picking the best solution. We're picking the least worst solution. If you will, everything has its pros and its cons. We're going to look at how we can best serve when it comes to handling chemicals, the cost, operation and maintenance. Given the nature of the pool and the location, working with staff, it was determined that going to a tabletized chlorine system for delivery, where the product can be delivered in fifty to a hundred pound pails, would be most suitable in that our other preferred system where we would use bulk chlorine and a truck comes in to fill up tanks that has to get within fifty feet of the tanks, given the location on the backside of the site, really wasn't a viable option for us. So as we looked at this, we looked, there's two primary manufacturers of tablet chlorine systems in the United States. PPG and Pulsar are the two brands. Both of them are NSF listed, National Sanitation Foundation, which is required by California Health and Safety Code. The Pulsar briquettes are a system that have small briquettes and they're a real unique size to make sure the operator cannot mix other chemicals inadvertently that could cause adverse reactions, off-gassing and undesirable consequences. The Pulsar briquettes are a system designed to use a low flow of water to give us a high concentration of chlorine as compared to the PPG that uses a three-inch puck, which is similar to other brands or other types of chemical tablets. That's a system designed to use high flow, giving us a low concentration of chlorine. Both of the systems use booster pumps to drive these systems to ensure the proper operation, whether filters are clean and dirty and all of that. And both of them are available through our local distribution channels for availability, service, support and warranties. From this, we had worked with staff talking about what they had available, what they've worked with before. And what we heard from staff is that the Pulsar was the brand that they have used most and what they were most comfortable with. This was also compared to a saltwater system because we did have questions come up. Is that a viable alternative to us? And the thing that we wanted to point out in a saltwater system is that a saltwater system is still a chlorine system. It's a chlorine delivery method. And that is all chlorine worldwide comes from salt. Through the same process that the famous physicist Michael Faraday in nineteen hundred discovered, and that is to use DC electrical current to saltwater. And he found that he was getting these funny smells. It was the element chlorine. Chlorine that doesn't exist in nature outside of a salt compound. And to this day, a salt system or a saltwater pool is simply adding salt to the pool water, running it through an electrolytic cell with DC electrical current, exciting the molecule to disassociate chlorine from sodium, creating chlorine then in the pool water itself. Those are pretty popular in many residential pools. The problem we have in public pools such as yours is that this process is now putting DC electrical current, electrolysis, into the pool water. Into the pool water that we've added salt, which is a electrolytic pacifier. So as such, what it means is heat exchangers, anything metallic in the pool system that that water touches can become a sacrificial antidote. So the life of heaters and heat exchangers and pump impellers and all the metallics that we have is sacrificed in these saltwater pools. As compared to a residential pool with plastic pumps and filters and even heat exchangers, that's an inconsequence to them. So based on those issues, we looked at it and said, the salt system really wasn't the viable or best system for us. Really was going to be this tablet and based on the staff recommendations, we looked at it and said, the Pulsar seemed to be the best system for our operations. We also talked about how we were going to heat the water for these pools. In the heating options, we took a look at the existing heaters that you had, which are typical atmospheric heaters operating at eighty-two percent thermal efficiency. Now, when we talk about thermal efficiency in pool heating, what we're talking about is of the heat generated in the box, how much is retained to transfer to the pool water, to our medium, and how much goes up the flue, the exhaust stack. And in an eighty-two percent thermal efficient heater, which is what you currently had, that means eighteen percent of the heat that we spent the money to generate goes up the stack. So what we recommended here is to go to a condensing pool heater, or what's called a condensing boiler. And in these, they're now a ninety-seven percent thermal efficiency. We've been able to trap that energy that we've created so it's going to reduce the overall requirements for our heating and the use of fossil fuels. Also by doing this, it allows us to offset the heat exchangers so it's outside of the pool heater itself, which then allows us to go to materials like titanium. So we look at the existing heating system that you've had and those have an expected life expectancy of somewhere around seven to ten years. By going to an external heat exchangers such as shown in this image here, this has a titanium heat exchanger that now has a life expectancy of upwards of twenty years. So double the life, far more efficient, more reliable for our operations. Again, this is one that's a pretty easy decision to say that this is really the better way to go. And taking a look at examples of some of the corrosion that we have seen, or we take a look at the pipes that have corroded over the years. So the original pipes, given the age of this pool, were steel pipes, all metallic. And by today's standards, everything is now going to be polyvinyl chloride PVC, Schedule eighty, CPVC, where it needs to be heat resistant as part of this system to again allow us to have something that's going to last for twenty-plus years without having maintenance required for those. We had had pool leak testing that was evaluated. We knew from the piping that we had leaks. The other issue became the shells itself, to take a look at those and how viable they were. Again, when we went through, we found that we had some issues from some of the tiles and penetrations. So part of our design for this renovation is to resolve all of those leaks as part of this. So as part of that, when we looked at the pool scope then, we've looked at replacing all of the wall tile in the pool with new tile, but allowing the floor tile to remain with the exception of the portions that have to be removed. If you look at the image on the left, you'll see the long shaded rectangle. We have to cut out a trench along the bottom of the pool at the deepest point because the main drains in the bottom of the pool are not compliant with the Federal Virginia Graham Baker Pool and Spa Safety Act, nor the California Assembly Bill AB ten twenty against suction entrapment. And so as part of this, the idea is to cut out that portion of the floor, put in new sofas, suction outlet fitting assemblies, as the codes refer to them, and install these such that they're fully compliant and would in no way, shape or form create a suction entrapment.
Do you think you'd be able to save that tile that you're removing to put back?
Probably not.
Okay.
The problem's going to be it's stuck to the concrete and even though you cut it out, it's very likely to bust up on us.
We are working closely with our historical architect and we have a lot of reviews. We review every material. And we try to find very close matches and in some cases, really close. And then in other cases, like in the large pool, the main drains are in the deep. That, if you can kind of see that area, that's going to be what's cut out. Put the new drains and then replaced. Architecture, it'll align with seams. So even if it's a little off, it'll look like it has a natural ending point.
And it's at the bottom of a pool, so.
Right.
I mean, that's a great point. When we take a look at a swimming pool, people often look at that blue pool and say, so what color blue is that tile? Not realizing that it was actually white and that when you fill it with water, just like your, well, old styrofoam cups, for example, how it takes that different hue. So as pointed out, when we look at different depths and contours of the floor, they're automatically going to have a different shade when you're looking at them. So again, looking at the tile replacement, you can see the walls are showing signs where the tile is falling off. We're also going to be doing renovation. One of the code compliant issues that we have is that California Health and Safety Code says the water line to top of deck shall be a distance not greater than twelve inches maximum. And the overflow gutters, where you see the lane lines to the right and on the left below the orange, that's the water level in the pool. So it's quite a hefty lift to get up and out of the pools. So part of our scope of work is to change that gutter profile so that we can put water skimmers in, allow us to raise the water level up slightly and make us compliant. So when someone comes buoyant to the edge, it's going to be roughly six inches to get themselves up and out of that pool, not over fourteen to sixteen inches that the current conditions are providing. So because of all that work done in the walls and the condition of the wall tiles, that's why we're in proposing to replace the wall tiles. But let's retain all of the floor tiles as much as possible. And again, going through this, coming up with the tile materials so that they can represent what we were looking at before in terms of tile colors, in terms of impervious materials and what's compliant with current code standards. Also, we've taken a look at what was happening in a geotechnical ultrasound investigation. So what were the soil conditions underneath the pool? So that as we look at some of this work that's happening, new plumbing that goes in, we make sure all of this is being done with the structural engineers so that everything is completely sound, so that it makes for a reliable and sustainable renovation of the pool.
Yes, in this case, we worked closely with our geotechnical consultant. And he had an expert in this type of technology. And he'd done quite a few large pools. You guys see university level and large public pools. Essentially, we were seeking, investigating to see if we had any voids that would have been problematic and create future problems after, you know, we're spending all this time and effort to create this nice new refurbished pool. And there's a full report available if anybody cares to read it. And the results were fantastic. We had literally no issues and no voids.
I have a question on that. So I know for a fact that this pool's been leaking water for generations. So we're saying that there is zero issue in the foundation underneath it. You're saying zero, like there's zero chance that when this construction starts, that they're going to go, oh wow, we didn't expect that.
We don't know if there's zero issues.
Is it five percent chance? Like I'm legit on this because I know it's been leaking for a very long time. So I'm a little concerned that you're saying that you see no problems at all in a facility that's this old, that has really not been maintained. I'm just concerned, that's all, because this is going to come back and bite us. I know it is.
And we've actually, you know, we've put that in front of us to investigate. We're considering doing a couple of boring's on the side yard that's directly adjacent between the school and the pool. This finished the first part. We're going to get to another slide in a minute. We're going to talk about some waterproofing and some drainage issues on that side as well. So the geotech has convinced me, I see no physical evidence of any settlement, any issues that would cause any concern. Apparently, we have very good percolation in that.
Whoever built it, however long ago, they built it bulletproof. That's essentially good. Okay.
Well, one last thing relative to the pool and to that point is that the pool's actually constructed with grade beams and then a concrete slab across the top of those beams. So when we look at the water below the pool, soil directly underneath is not supporting the bottom of the pool itself. It's the grade beams that span the area as well. That's one of the reasons that we have a higher level of confidence.
And we had an independent roofing manufacturer do a roof survey. We had been taking a look at it. We knew it needed work. Bear in mind, we're doing a seismic retrofit upgrade. Structurally, we're going to have to replace about, I don't know, somewhere in the neighborhood of a third to fifty percent of the roof diaphragm. So half the roof's coming off anyway. So it just made all the sense in the world to rather than do a patch job, we're going to specify what is a pretty common solution, like if you did a new project these days. Perfect for retrofits as well, but they take the whole roof off. And it's a single ply PVC, sixty mil. It's essentially a lifetime warranty, essentially leak proof. Only way it can leak is, you know, if somebody digs a hole in it or... It's essentially maintenance free. So that's the program there. The drains are shot. We do have evidence, and we'll get to that in a minute, of some leaking in the... Here we go. We have some interior leaking in that corner where one of the roof drains is on the lower roof. This is the southwest corner, or southeast corner. That's the side yard. We have a catch basin there, which is completely blocked. This was back in, I want to say February, March?
Yes.
Yeah. Got some pretty significant rain. There was actually a two-day period where I know it rained just about all day, both days. That coincidentally was when our leak detection service was out there doing the second, final day of their leak investigation. This is a retaining wall on the side of the building. It's about three or four feet. The locker area is below that top of grade there where the grass is. So right now, we've put in, we estimated, we know what a system would be. And it'll, it's going to cost about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it's going to, and half of that is just in the excavation and just getting to the work and doing the work. But it's no doubt the original waterproofing system was just shot. And we had evidence of water getting in at this corner into the crawl space and the utility chases. So that's the plan there. That's where we can see the drain. We're having that investigated right now too with our civil engineer. And as need be, may have to do a complete new connection to the street main on the storm drain. But that's what's being investigated. Okay, Michael?
So this comparison shot is to really bring forth, part of the design is adding fire sprinklers to the building. In order to get the water into the building, we have to have a fire riser, which is located exterior. There was worry that it would affect the main facade or be kind of an eyesore to passerbys. So as the render shows, it's pretty far back in the side yard and behind a fence. So visually, it's not that abrasive. And so that was a modification from our previous presentation. Additionally, since our last presentation to you, there was changes to the locker room layout. With discussions with the community, there is a higher, high emphasis on having private spaces and family rooms so that you can go with your child and have a secure location to change them and not have to worry about being in the general populace of the locker room. So with that, we reorganized the locker layout, created a family room and an additional private restroom at the expense of two showers and two changing rooms, which are both highly above the code required minimum. So we still managed to have eight showers for use, eight changing rooms, and keep the six toilets to be spread out. So this shown here is the women's locker room. And here is the men's. It's a mirror design while the men does have urinals instead of additional toilets. So moving on to the cost estimate, this is, we show previously the conceptual cost we presented to you in October and now our current cost. This does include comments from the council members on their site visit, how they desired updated windows. So this includes the cost for brand-new windows, the additional waterproofing for the design, as well as the need for a full roof replacement. And as you see, as we've developed through the design, our design contingencies and escalations have reduced because we are moving forward in the project. forward in the project. Things that are hidden are becoming revealed to us, and we are incorporating it into the design, and our new projection cost is $11 million. This is our proposed schedule. It's following the same timeline as before. We expect final bid estimates to be completed by the end of October.
And we've just submitted fifty percent completions, construction documents. We have a whole series of quality assurance, quality control with Elias and his group and an outside independent architect that review all our drawings. We let that overlap, and we're proceeding to ninety percent construction documents, and at that point, we'll be submitting to the city. And that also involves simultaneously during that design and production process, we're interfacing with the local fire department, interfacing with Public Works on civil matters, and any other public agencies and city staff that we need to be coordinating with.
Questions?
Yeah, so this is the conclusion of the presentation, and we'll be more than happy to answer any question.
Thank you, Mr. Sessun. Any questions?
So thank you, and thank you for adding the new windows. Did that also include the outside grate, the gating to on the west side where for balls, you know how we have the protective covering? Did that include that?
Yes. Right now, it's still a discussion item at minimum. We're gonna take them all off, clean them up in a comprehensive preparation manner, and then paint them. There is still some discussion about can we afford and should we replace those, and so we'll make that final determination. It's not a huge line item cost.
And then one other question, just, and I know I'm gonna, I don't wanna open a can of worms, but so on the parent, the family changing room, so if like my husband was taking our daughters to the, to, and he was going to the men's section and taking them to the family changing room, in the men's locker room, when they walk in, will they be walking, would the kids be walking, oh, exposed to where other men would be showering? Or is it a private kinda?
No, there is a private wall and door to completely block off the locker room, both men and female side.
Because knowing someone who has young, who had daughters, and my husband would take them to go swim.
Absolutely. That's exactly what this is addressing and making that functionality.
Question. Are there, I know there were some rooms that were, I know, design-wise that we took out, but are there rooms, offices, whatever, for staff?
Yes, we have a ground-level office room, as well as the two upstairs areas are offices.
Offices for staff, okay. So your staff feels they have a sufficient amount of... Because I know one of the problems at ESAC, and that was not our design, I get that, is that there's literally no office for any coaches, anybody over there at all.
Yes, so we talked about this recently, and they were able to make some accommodations. And so now we have a good office space downstairs for potentially the aquatics manager supervisor, and then we've got guard offices upstairs. So we think that we have adequate space.
Thank you.
Mayor Proton, any questions?
Only that, are the timings in October and September just predicated on council meeting calendars, or is that the time to complete the review work?
So once the design is complete, the staff would bring this project back to City Council and ask for approval of the plan, plan adoption, and request for advertisement of the project publicly. And we expect...
Do you anticipate receiving that and being ready for September for us to see it or October?
No, it's probably gonna be after September, probably October-ish, but all the intentions in the world are to have this done as quickly as possible and have this hopefully awarded in the first quarter of next year. And I know that a lot of you guys are really anxious to get this job off the ground, and I acknowledge that. But frankly, we run into some issues. Waterproofing, drainage, looking at the roof, looking at the condition of the soil underneath the shale, and we had to run some testing. So, you know, we figured we need to really make sure that what we do is a complete package. And it took a few more weeks, but I'm rushing this. Any weekly meeting I have with these guys, they could tell you how much I am emphasizing, hey, we need to get this job done and quickly and get it final. So just wanna let everybody know. I'm really working hard. We are all, and they've been great, and they've been accommodating me, and thank you so much for doing that.
Well, thank you for that, Elias, but I applaud your due diligence in the design phase because it's much easier to fix a problem on paper than to start opening walls and figure out, oh, we should have done some ultrasound on the foundation.
Right.
So by nature, I mean, if you redesigned your house built in 1940, you're gonna find things you didn't expect to find. That's gonna happen in this project. So I commend you on giving us the plan thus far. It's looking really nice.
Really, it's the team. It's not me. I have project manager Cheryl, LaFawn, the city manager, Mr. Daryl George. My colleagues, Ali and her staff, has been very cooperative. We have seeked their input, make sure that her staff feels comfortable, you know, Aquatics Subcommittee, the Reckon Park Commission. I mean, we are making, trying to make everybody happy.
With this many people working on it, Elias, no doubt we could get it moving even more quickly than we anticipated.
Chris, all right. I gotta lob one final grenade into your lap, and that is, we have a new number, but we still don't have the funding. So what is, I know we talked about this, how do we, to get that delta between what we've allocated and what's gonna be needed? Is there a plan for that? Because I know that we're gonna have to get that done before we start, which means you got some time. I'm just, don't know what the plan is.
So I did some calculation. If all works out correctly, and if we assume the bid, the low bid comes within the approximate dollars that these guys are estimating, by first quarter of 2024, we're gonna have $4.4 million short in funding. But once the project is completed, we're gonna get a million dollar from school, and then, and then two and a half million is gonna come to the budget comes July 2024. So in January of next year, the shortfall is 4.4 million, and we need to really collect that money before we could award this project. And you're correct.
I lost ya.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Okay.
From a shortfall to not a shortfall?
Okay, yeah, yeah.
It would be good if we could see like a grid, like just like a time, like, I made it another next council, like a grid of the funding and the timelines, just a quick one sheet that really spells it out and where the money's coming from. Because I know CDC, Richard Lundquist had also had, I said he would be interested in helping either raise funds or, and then with the arts and culture money, you know, because we didn't talk about the, how, what the arts and culture is gonna, we're gonna do a mosaic wall. So it would be best if we could just see a one sheet of the timeline with the money and where, so we can really look to see where we need to focus.
Daryl, were you gonna say?
Yeah, I think we can, we'll certainly do that. I think the main piece in Elias was alluding to this, but we have budgeted 2.5 million for the 2425 capital project budget that we will probably have to accelerate and fund that sooner than 2425 to close that gap. And I know that Ali has been working on a fundraising campaign that will, we're getting ready to kick off in terms of approaching the private sector, our corporate entities in the city, and we're feeling very confident that we can close that gap even further by the time, by the first quarter of next year.
Yeah, so please don't let the funding stop the progress.
We're not, believe me, we are not.
Like, if I could hear September, that would be ish, yeah. You know me, I, this is a very, near and dear to my heart.
Yeah, the plan is for me to bring back at the meeting in August, bring back this capital campaign so that we can, you can see all the details and see the numbers. And so at that time, we can provide that update to you as well on what that gap might be, and you can see the program, and we're gonna get started.
And then could we, similar to what the school did, is they put up like band, like a signs that said, "Coming soon."
Yes.
Could we do that for the plunge so that people realize that we haven't forsaken it and lost the...
Sure. We know that it's closed.
We can do that.
But we're working on it, because I get questions all the time about what's going on the plunge, and if, they've always done a great job of, here's what's coming soon so that there's, we can do that.
Yeah, sure. We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Coming Soon Haunted House 2023. No, the reason I brought that up, Ali, was that if, we know we're gonna need to raise some money. I just wanna make sure there's a plan in place and not wait until we put the first shovel on the ground to do so, that's all.
Yeah. By law, by law, we have to have the funding in place before we award a project, and Mr. Baldino knows that. So we're gonna have to do that regardless, because the law requires us to do that. The only, the only entity that don't have to have funding to get projects awarded is federal government.
Imagine that.
That's right. Because they can print money anytime, right? Any other questions?
Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
We are receiving and filing.
And thank you for giving us some detailed information as well.
All right, Item 19, Memorandum of Understanding between the City of El Segundo and El Segundo Police Support Services Employees Association Amendment to the City Contributions for Calpers' Medical Premiums. And Rebecca Reddick, our Director of HR.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. This is the approval of the MOU. We have been negotiating with the civilians in the police department, and as you see from the attachments, the approach to the negotiations was an extremely comprehensive review of the MOU. And we were working simultaneously on this MOU as we were also working with the supervisors group. So we were able to meet with this association five times, and we came to an agreement late Wednesday evening. Were able to ratify it Thursday and be able to bring it to council today. This agreement is a longer-term agreement. It goes from October 1st, actually, it's October 1st of 2022 to June 30th of 2026. This provides equity adjustments for the positions in the unit because based on our salary survey of comparable agencies, they were below the mean or the average. It provides 2% COLAs. It also streamlines the health insurance, the basic life insurance, and the dental envision to align with other groups. This also includes a $2,000 ratification bonus, and we did resolve an issue with the holiday pay for Thanksgiving and Christmas for certain classifications. The approval and adoption of this MOU removes that side letter from the agreement. It gives the police department more flexibility in being able to schedule people when they need to. The resolution, the Calpers requires a resolution to approve the salary ranges, so there is also the resolution for the new salary ranges.
Thank you. I know you and your department have been very busy with all these groups and getting the closure. We love it. Thank you. Mr. Henley, would you read the resolution?
Yes, there are two this evening. First is a resolution approving adopting Memorandum of Understanding between the City of El Segundo and the El Segundo Police Support Services Employees Association Bargaining Unit. It's ready for adoption.
I will move approval. Is there a second?
Persek second.
Great, thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please take a voice vote?
Councilmember Baldino?
Yes.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember or Persek?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Yes.
Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
Five oh.
Thank you.
Next resolution, fixing the employer contribution under the Public Employees Medical and Hospital Care Act at an equal amount for employees and annuitants with respect to a recognized employees organization. 008 El Segundo Police Support Services Employee Association is ready for adoption.
Who would like to move approval?
Persek to move.
Great. Drew's second. Thank you. Madam Clerk, again, please.
Councilmember Baldino?
Yes.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Persek?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boyle?
Yes.
Five oh.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, final business item is, under Committees, Commissions, and Board Presentations, Item 20, Appointment to the Recreation and Parks Commission. And congratulations to Jeanette Gann for a full term on the UREX and Park Commission expiring May 30th of 2027. Great stuff. All right, City Clerk, reports this evening.
No report.
Thank you. I'm sorry, City Treasurer's not here. Councilmember Baldino?
A couple items. I wanna thank Parks and Rec and Ali for the Teen Center Open House. It has been refurbished and repainted with ping pong and everything else, and you're open for summer, so thank you for getting that done. I attended the Juneteenth Festival here over on Monday, and I thought that was great. That was really a lot of fun to see people out. And then I'll do my best to summarize where we are with AB 1216. I will be going up tomorrow for a committee hearing. We have been, and let me just, again, thank Carol and Tracy, and Daryl and Elias for all the time spent. We have had numerous phone calls with the good people at AQMD to try to get them on board with our legislation. We have gone back and forth on our red line, and we're still in the process of getting their agreement on this bill. I just received an email that the City of Los Angeles has their comments on what they want this bill to say, so it is very much a work in project, progress. But I am fairly confident that we will pass out of this committee, but there, we will be asked for amendments on the Senate floor to change what this bill does. One of the big ones I just read is, the city wants the state to pay for it. That could be a huge problem in getting approval and getting funding. So we have made tremendous progress, but there's still a lot of work to do. So thank you all again for the time you put into it. That's it.
All righty, thank you. Councilmember Drew?
Yes, actually, we had our Aquatics Subcommittee meeting yesterday. Really good group. I think we're gonna get a lot done. A couple of things that were covered during that meeting were a discussion on the master swim program that's going on right now, potential changes to that, as well as initial discussions on a work plan. So we are really gonna take the next meeting, I think, to really kinda hash out what we want to accomplish and timeframe and things like that. So we really wanna get ahead of the fact that we're gonna have two pools here, so that we're up and running when that time comes. But really good group, very engaged on both city staff's side and the volunteers that are on it. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Persek?
Yeah, I just wanna thank the, Ali, Ali Mancini and her team for the Teen Center, the reimagination of the Teen Center. You know, they did a great job with a very little bit of money just to make it exciting and inviting for people to come in, because, you know, part of our, part of the rec park redesign encompasses the Teen Center. So we are looking out for like a larger renovation there, especially with the skate park and basketball court that slants. So I know that committee's kicking off soon, which I'll be part of, and we're excited to get a better, you know, better idea where we wanna grow the rec park in the future. So thank you to your team for making that happen.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Pimentel?
I will add an additional note that the Teen Center is getting good reviews from my neighbors and one of my children, who really enjoyed the new programming there and the new amenities. We went to the Metro Governor, Board of Governors' presentation last week on Metro's plans for this year. Their presentation was done before the state budget was passed, so a lot of the angst over their fiscal cliff was assuaged by a very generous budgetary grant from the state. But it was interesting to hear how Metro's... But it was interesting to hear how Metro spends out of its general fund, out of its operating budget, twenty-eight million dollars. It receives no homeless services reimbursement. So it spends twenty-eight dollars, twenty-eight million dollars of its funding that it would normally spend running trains just on dealing with unhoused people riding the trains. And it was particularly interesting to hear from the mayors of cities who are at the ends of the different train lines about what happens to some of those people after they're moved off the trains and some of the challenges. I thought that was instructive as we go into our own discussions in the South Bay about the ultimate extension of the Green Line, whether that will occur, and how much of the burden on public services Metro intends for cities to address. So on that note, I will also say that on Thursday, the county will take up the routing of the Green Line. And that routing is, has three operating plans. The one that we like is called Operating Plan Two, and most of the South Bay likes. And that operating plan would mean you could get on the Green Line in El Segundo and ride it directly up the west side ultimately to connect to the exposition line or to the purple line eventually to go to Santa Monica. The other operating plan that receives votes is Operating Plan One, which is the current operating plan, which would take you all the way east to Norwalk. And that Norwalk line would go one seat from Norwalk West, and they in tune would connect up to the Crenshaw Line. That route is favored by the Gateway Cities. So you will see a note probably in your inboxes on the council level from the COG asking you to send notes to Holly Mitchell, our supervisor, that says that we strongly favor Operating Plan Two, which keeps people effectively on the four oh five routing. The idea is that that Green Line, when it fully connects, will be able to take pressure off of the four oh five in a way that Operating Plan One, all the way east, would not. So that was the big Metro news. We addressed that in some depth at the COG. Just the amount of money involved in those things is staggering. Sanitation is this week. I do not know, that meeting starts at one thirty tomorrow. I'm due to be back by then, but I may not make it. If I do not, I don't think there will be a quorum. So we may not get anything done there anyhow. But I know you'll be disappointed on the sanitation report. And other than that, there was no homeless services meeting yet this month. I think we're off till, till August for that. That's all, Mr. Man.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. All right, let's see. I just want to congratulate Tanya Taylor and everyone that was involved at Juneteenth. It was a great event. They did a really good job. Was there for a couple hours, and talent was really good, the vendors were good, and people really seemed to enjoy themselves. So it was a fun event. And great job to your, your team, Ali, in helping support that and everyone else who was involved. It was a good event. All right, city attorney?
Nothing, Seavey. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, city manager.
I also don't have anything else, Mayor.
All right, thank you. We are done for the evening. We're adjourned. Thank you. It is eight fifty-two.